Call the meeting order. Mr. Scott, lead us in the pledge. Please rise, take your hat off and put your hand over your heart.
I delete this to the flag of the United States of America and choose a republic which will stand one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll observe a moment of silence.
Shivi, here. Brekis, Zadra, Delgado, Dorch, Jordan, Kishel.
Here. Public comment. John Toth.
Quite a gathering today, Mayor Kishel. Thank you, council members, Mr. Klinger. I apologize, I can't stay for the time that the agenda item will be heard on the bungalows at Sky Vista. For the record, my name is John Toth. I've been a resident and a homeowner out at Sky Vista since August of 1997 when it was being promoted as a master planned community complete with an equestrian center. Things have changed. It's now 15 years later and later this afternoon you're going to hear a professional presentation from Angela Fuess of CFA because she does that well. You're going to hear from residents foreign against the project. I would like to just go ahead and focus on three questions and just have one map up for view if we can. You'll see the map plenty of times later today, I think. The first question I have is that we have various types of residences in the existing development. You can see some higher density part phases of the development. You can also see the earlier phases that had roughly 3.2 or so homes per acre. And the area that's outlined in yellow is the development that I'm talking about that will be presented later. And so what we see here is we see high density multifamily attached housing. It appears to be inconsistent with the architectural type and the land use type around it. And so the first question is, you know, why such a high density project that appears to be out of line with the rest of the PUD? The second is, is this development density and the architectural details that you'll see later today sensitive to the surrounding patterns and structures as required by the master plan policy BD1? And the third question that I have is do these multifamily units in this predominantly detached single family residence neighborhood, are they designed so they appear to be single family houses according to the master plan policy BD5? As you can tell from my presentation, I'm not for the density. I'm also not real keen on the architectural type that you'll see. I also question the concessions that were made by the planning commission to exempt part of the structures from the articulation requirements. And I also question the concession that was made to reduce the landscaping from 20% to 15%. In the summertime, we're going to see quite a heat island effect from all the rooftops and asphalt and sidewalks from that area. And so I would really suggest, I know we're all here to do what's right with this project. It was originally set aside for schools, not going to happen according to the school district, was to revert to open space. If it were to revert back to developer, no one is interested in maintaining the open space, so that's a moot point at this time. I just ask that we do what's right for this space and for the neighborhood.
Thank you very much.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I ask the individual question material to the item? Mr. Toth, the Plan Development Handbook states that at time of closing, the developer will disclose to purchasers the provision that the property is school site and if it does not turn into school site, if the school doesn't exercise, you know, the option, it would revert to open space. You know when you go to title and you close, you know, you sign all the documents?
Yes.
Do you remember getting one of these documents in your packet?
Yes, and this actually came up in the previous discussions for the project back in 2006, commonly known as the duets that were proposed at that time. And it was a disclosure that was made to all the homeowners that bordered that site at that time, that it was either going to be schools or it was going to be open space. The challenge at the time, if I may add, is that open space was pretty ambiguously defined and that's part of the troubles that we've had with the land use.
Okay. That leads me to question the, you know, the laws related to disclosure at time of real estate sales in terms of, you know, us putting something into, you know, that process, so I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
And you'll probably hear from, if I may add, you'll hear from some of the other residents who've been there for a while, that that disclosure was made at the time of purchase.
Okay.
Right? Thanks again.
Thank you. Donna Klontz?
Donna Klontz, I'm vice chair of the Reno Senior Citizen Advisory Committee. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council. I wanted to say a few words about my dear friend Steve Jacobs, who passed away on January 22nd. He was the current chair of the Reno Senior Citizen Advisory Committee and often came to your meetings to speak about the needs of seniors. He was an eloquent and effective advocate. When you did the moment of silence this afternoon, I was thinking of Steve and wanted to talk to you in public a little bit more about Steve. I first met Steve as a ship Medicare advisor back in 2004 and '05 when the new prescription drug program was coming into play. And he was a new volunteer at the time, having moved here in 2003. And I remember being impressed with this gentleman who knew so much about seniors and knew so much about programs and about the Medicare plan and later on discovered that he'd spent about 40 years working in mental health as a counselor and as an administrator in the state of New York, running programs in New York City and in rural New York. So we were so lucky to have such a well-informed and such a strong advocate for seniors here, giving us decades of his practical knowledge and experience on behalf of seniors and others in need of services. Until his death, he was a ship volunteer every Thursday at the Washoe County Senior Center, helping seniors with Medicare questions and making referrals to the other services that they needed to be able to stay well and living at home. And because he was immersed in seniors every week, he was able to keep all of us aware of the needs that seniors continue to have here in Reno and in Washoe County. In 2006 and '07, as the economy and funding became even more and more critical for all public services, we formed a small advocacy group and determined that we would build relationships with our city councils, with our county commissions, and with the state legislature to make sure that all of the folks that are making decisions about these programs were made aware of the current needs of seniors and with stories about the things that we're working and that could continue to work in our areas, given our limited funding. We will all miss Steve's leadership and his years of experience and his positive attitude. He always made his points with wisdom and with a great sense of humor. We learned so much from him and grew stronger in our own abilities and in our confidence to speak out for seniors. We have so much more to do and I and the other advocates and senior volunteers who knew Steve will remember him every day as we all carry on the work that he loved so much. Thank you.
Donna, apologize, I meant to mention Steve and I apologize with everything flying that I didn't mention Steve to be thought of in our prayers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I had not heard that. And thank you, Donna, for sharing that information.
Yes.
Just absolutely, you didn't even come close to any exaggeration. So much more could be said about what he did for us and the information he shared with us about the needs, his just been incredible. You've got an even bigger burden on your shoulders now.
Thank you. Deanna Sella? Identify yourself for the record, please.
My name is Deanna Sella and my daughter and I reside at 9860 Crystal Line Drive here in Reno. I wish to comment on the bungalow project, which are items F.10 and F.11 on your agenda. I am opposed to the building of rentals or condos on the bungalow project property because I feel it will decrease the value of our homes and bring in undesirable residents who will not respect the area, the property, or our neighborhoods. I am also opposed to the structural design as it is outlined. I am not opposed to the homes being built on this site, but I feel that single resident homes, not rentals, are much more desirable and should have the same structural appearance as existing subdivision with the same property setbacks, sidewalks, curbs, gutters, and the same CCNRs as the rest of Sky Vista. Perhaps smaller homes would be more affordable. I suggest a development perhaps for senior citizens ages 50 and above, which would bring in older residents, who would not increase the strain on our already overloaded school system. And seniors tend to be, tend to stay at home and be more quiet and would not add to the traffic and the noise situation which we are already experiencing. In the past two or three years, there have been, there has been an increase of speeding on Sky Vista in our neighborhoods. Several homes on our street alone have been vandalized, burglarized, and vehicles have been broken into. It is not safe anymore to leave our vehicles in our driveways or on the street. Fences have repeatedly been tagged in our area. We have even had tranchants going through our garbage cans looking for anything that could be recycled. All of this shows disrespect to our person, our homes, our vehicles, our privacy, and our safety. I feel a rental development would only add to these issues. Please do not approve this project as it is outlined. Instead, ask the developers to redesign a more appealing project which would complement the rest of Sky Vista and bring in homeowners who would take pride of ownership and be an asset to our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is he okay, Selk? Kevin Dick?
Good afternoon, Mayor Kishel and council members. My name's Kevin Dick. I'm here today representing Energy Fit Nevada. I would like to follow up on the council's October proclamation of Energy Fit Nevada Day. Energy Fit Nevada is a program to help homeowners improve the health, comfort, and energy efficiency of their homes. We use the Home Performance with Energy Star program and we connect homeowners with pre-screen and qualified energy efficiency assessors and contractors that are trained to do energy At the October proclamation, we kicked off the wintertime rebate special and I'm happy to tell you that all 100 of the special enhanced rebates for homeowners have been allocated. We've conducted 128 assessments through that program, energy efficiency assessments of homes statewide. 56 of these were in northern Nevada and 34 have been in Reno. To date, of those 100 rebate programs, 45 home energy upgrades have been completed. And I'm proud to tell you that out of those 45, 20 have been in the city of Reno. We've got 55 more in process and those need to be completed by the end of March and we'll provide you with a full update of the number of homeowners in Reno that have been able to take advantage of the program. It's important to note that we're continuing to provide discounted home energy assessments for homeowners. Those are available for $199. And we continue to provide rebates at our regular level of $500 for 15% energy savings, $1,000 for 20% energy savings. The funding is available through a grant from the Department of Energy through the Nevada State Office of Energy. That funding runs out this September and so we hope to secure additional funding to be able to continue the program. Anybody who's interested in improving the energy efficiency, health, and comfort of their home, they can visit our website at energyfitnevada.org or contact us at 702-734-2000.
Thank you very much. Lonnie Feimster?
Hello, thank you for having me here, city council members, Mr. Mayor. I'm Lonnie Feimster. I'm representing myself, my property, and some issues that have come up. I came before the planning commission and I was concerned because I didn't know if I could be here on the agenda for item F9, but I did want to express that I may have caused some staff members to be confused about my interest in the Oliver Montello properties that were purchased by the city a few years ago and the fact that there was substantial effort by the city, substantial money spent to run drug dealers out the neighborhood. Some of us literally put our lives on the line. And I remember thinking at one time, as I had a carload of young men thrown in jail for shooting shotguns up in the air at 8:30 in the morning when the church was getting ready to have a program in the park and I was cleaning the weeds up, I thought they were going to shoot me, but that carries some risk in itself. But, you know, I said to myself, well, you gotta, you gotta die sometime and, you know... The issue of Oliver and Montello is that a million and a half dollars has been spent on the property and the community came together and put hundreds and hundreds of hours, I don't know, maybe thousands of hours of human capital into a plan to do something positive for the community. The young people in the area, they need childcare, they need someplace to get access to high-speed internet, and I just see that the process is going to where, well, we waited too long, where I see other projects raising millions of dollars for community benefits in other parts of town. I'm told no one wants to contribute anything and here we are. We've invested us as taxpayers, federal taxpayers, as a city, some of you on the city council, and the young people, the young people in the community need some help. They need resources, they need a building. And so I hope the city council will consider whether there's resources to provide some assistance to do something on that property other than to bill three duplexes. That's an extremely hard thing for me to swallow as a real estate broker and quite educated in that area. And there's so much need in that community to see this opportunity wasted on such a feeble attempt. We have empty houses in the community. It's not like we need more houses, a survey that was done, no one asked for residential buildings to be built on that lot. So I just hope the council will look at whether there's other budget money that can be used to get some kind of frame and shelf or some kind of community facility and to not throw this opportunity away. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mark Marquel?
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you, Mark.
Hi, my name is Mark Marquel. I'm a conservative Reno resident and I want to thank you, council members and mayor and city manager, and that's a mouthful. Okay, I'm reading from this because I suffer from a traumatic brain injury and I get off track and sometimes cursing voluntarily. When I was a young adult, I had a drunk driving rest, 23 reckless driving rests, and 32 driving licenses with license citations. In 1989, we drank four gallons of wine and were on ready to get more, get more. We had a car crash and the police report said we were going over 100 miles an hour. We hit the curb and rolled eight times, going over 150 feet. I was not wearing my seatbelt if it wasn't mandatory back then, and I was ejected and the car landed on my head. I was dead at the scene, but when I got to the hospital, the doctor brought me back to life. I was in a coma for a month, in the hospital five and a half months more. When I was released from the hospital, I was wheelchair-bound, but the Holy Spirit helped. God willing me alive to show what can happen if you get in the car with a drunk driver or drink and drive. I can't walk, I have, I have to use a walker, an electric wheelchair. I ride a bus now, I can't drive, I can't clear my apartment, I can't find gainful employment, I can't have a relationship, I have trouble thinking, speaking. I lost my wife and my family. I wear dangers now and they keep falling out because I did drugs when I was young. It was years after I quit doing drugs that I lost my teeth, but the damage is done. I'm an example of what can happen if you get in the car with a drunk driver. It's my mission in life to give the message out. So don't let this happen to you and your family. Don't drink and drive or get in the car with a drunk driver.
Thank you very much, Mark. That's a good advice. Jenna Vandemar?
My name is Yana Verdehar. I'm a local landscape architect. I'm talking to you today in opposition for LDC 13-00025. It's on the corner of Pembroke and McCarran, inside the floodplain area. Can we show that in the overhead? This is a map from Wood Rogers that I'm using here, but the parcel we're talking about is right here and you'll be talking about that later. I want to remind you, the city of Reno wants to be the green city of the West, which means commitment to reduce the impact on the environment and to improve residents' quality of life. This area here is a floodplain. The depth through the groundwater is only four to six feet deep and even though in the proposal there is some measures to deal with stormwater, this four to six feet deep groundwater will mean that the stormwater detention areas will actually be holding water most of the year. Also, the city of Reno has a LID design manual with some really great ways to deal with stormwater, such as green roofs, permeable pavers, rain gardens, and some more infiltration basins. They're really great measures for development of areas in floodplains or in areas that do flood to deal with the stormwater and also to clean it before it ends up in our rivers. And I don't see very many of those measures in the plan. Finally, this is a flood area and I want to remind you that the area did flood in the '97 flood. This is a picture of the '97 flood. It's this area here. And later today, you will also be looking at the UNR farmland, which is along there on McCarran. So this whole area needs to be looked at as a comprehensive project as opposed to small little parcels that are going to be developed and increase the imperious surfaces that will then cause more flooding in surrounding neighborhoods, which already are happening at this time. So again, I'd like to voice my opposition to passing that proposal later this afternoon and instead ask the city council to do a regional approach for this area that will deal with the stormwater problems and floods that we have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Peggy, you didn't give me a last name, so you have to identify yourself for the record.
Peggy Montgomery.
Montgomery. Go ahead.
Okay, and I hear, I'm here on behalf of the northeast Reno. I agree with Lonnie Feimster about putting duplex over in that area. At the time when we went over, first of all, I wanted to know why us in the neighborhood wasn't contacted. We're all in the neighborhood thinking that we're going to get some kind of building put over there for our youth, for our kids, for the older people, for the younger people, and then all of a sudden, bop, bop, all of a sudden, we want to have apartment buildings put up. My second concern is the sewer capacity over there because I do know there is a set of apartments already over there and I do know people that live over there that's always having trouble with the sewer lines backing up. So that's my second concern, but I want to know if we were good enough to come together, have a meeting about cleaning up that area over there involving all the members over there in the neighborhood. We should have been good enough for someone to come again and have meetings and talk about what we wanted to put on that property. So I think we were done very wrong over there. The people in that neighborhood worked hard with Reno Police Department, they worked hard with the city to clean up that area and everyone over there in that neighborhood and all around the neighborhood, we were expecting for a building to be put up there for our kids, for our young men, for our young women, and now all of a sudden we're being told we're going to have apartments thrown up there. I don't think that's right. And I really don't think the rest of the neighborhood and the people in that community is aware of what's going on. I think we got slapped in the face.
All right, thank you very much. Lily Artis?
Hi, I'm Lily Artis.
Put the mic down so you can identify yourself. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Hi, I'm Lily Artis and I don't live in northeast Reno and Mrs. Montgomery, she tapped already on a lot of things that is an issue in that neighborhood. However, we were told some time ago, and I was at a meeting here, we talked about big sisters and big brothers. I just want to know if that is going to happen or if that isn't going to happen in the northeast Reno, or whatever happened to that, that idea. Also, someone told me, I don't know how true this is, I don't like to say a lot of hearsay, but like Ms. Montgomery said, the sewer capacity over there is a major problem. I've had to call out a plumber three times because of a sewer problem. And now they're saying that if it is a sewer problem, then if it's in the street, it is the obligation of the property owners? of the property owners. I would like to know if that is true also. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I can give you just some brief information. It's not necessarily the final information on your big brothers, big sisters question. I do also recall that they were talking about putting a service location there, their headquarters. I believe, well, I know for a fact that they got a grant and they're now located on Moana Lane, kind of near Grant and Moana, but whether or not that will preclude them or has excluded their thoughts of going to that location, I don't know. I think it would probably be a safe guess that they got their location because of a grant and the location they were talking about where you are may not be happening, but you would need to follow up with them. When they were looking at your site is when they got a grant and went to the Moana Lane location.
Okay. Thank you very much, Sharon.
Thank you. Richie Ray Walker?
Richie Ray Walker, Reno, Nevada. I'd like to dedicate this public comment to my mom, who passed away November the 3rd, three days before the election. She was hoping that Governor Mitt Romney would win the election, and so did I, but that is not the case today. I've entitled this public comment "Calling the Kittle Black." As you well know, back in June of 2012, the Judiciary Committee held hearings on the scandal called Fast and Furious. That was a scandal in which two Border Patrol agents, both 24 years of age, were shot to death by the Mexican drug cartel. They're dead. And they were only 24 years old. That's pretty young. And Eric Holder, along with three ATF agents, were involved in that scandal, where over 2,000 rifles, pistols, and shotguns were smuggled into Mexico. We still don't know the whole story, and we never will know. Eric Holder was cited with civil and criminal contempt at the Judiciary Committee. He refused to answer any questions and took the Fifth Amendment, which he can do constitutionally. We all know that. What I think is really bad about this scandal is that these two Border Patrol agents, their families are never going to get justice. I know that, no more than the four young Americans that were murdered in Benghazi, Libya. They're not going to get justice either. And I watched all the hearings in June of 2012 of the Fast and Furious scandal, and even to this day, nothing has been done about that scandal, Fast and Furious. And I spent quite a bit of time in the state of New Mexico, where I met quite a few Border Patrol agents, and it's pretty serious stuff down there, New Mexico and Arizona both, along the Mexican border there with the drug cartel. And the two Border Patrol agents, Brian Terry and Carlos Zabata, I hate to say this, but their families have sued the government. It's a civil litigation thing, and I don't even think much is going to happen in that regard either. And I wish I could go into more and more detail on this Fast and Furious scandal. I plan on doing that later on, along with the Benghazi scandal. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for yours. Having no other public comment, I'm going to close the public comment section, bring back to the table city manager announcements. He stepped away for a minute, so... Okay, we'll go to item A6, approval of the agenda. Staffs requesting that item K1H be pulled. Proclamations, none. Presentations, none. Public comment at 12. Public hearings on F1 through F12. 6 o'clock, there will be a hearing on item M1, McCarran Center, UNR Farms. There will, I will be proposing that there will be a joint Reno City Council and Redevelopment Agency meeting after the consent agenda items today, which we would go into recess and then come open up the redevelopment agency meeting. Anybody got anything you want to pull for discussion? Okay, Chair will entertain a motion for approval. Have a motion? Have a second? All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Approval of the January 16th minutes? Do you have a motion? Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second? All in favor, say aye. Those that approve, no. Motion carries unanimously. And since the city manager thought best about joining us again, I'll let you have your announcement, sir.
I don't have any.
You don't have any? Why didn't you write me a note? All right.
I'm putting you on your toes.
Yes, sir. All right. At this time, we'll go to the cash disbursement. Anybody got anything you need to disclose or anything? Chair will entertain a motion for approval of January 6th and January 19th?
I'll make them.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second? All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Proclamations, there's none. Under the consent agenda, any items you want to pull for discussion? Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second? All in favor, say aye. I think that's a record.
That is a record.
All right. At this time, I suggest we go into recess and open up the redevelopment direction. The chair will entertain a motion to go into recess? Do I have a motion? Oh, that's right. That's my discretion. That's right. So I'm going to exercise it. There's very few that I have, so I thought I'd try. All right, now we'll call the meeting to order of the redevelopment agency.
Here.
Breckus?
Here.
Zadra?
Here.
Delgado?
Here.
Dorch?
Here.
Kishel?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
All right. At this time, we'll go approval of the agenda. Oh, I overstepped that. Public comment? Public comment saying none? I'll close the public comment. I'll bring it back to the approval of the agenda.
Who to approve?
Motion? Do I have a second? Second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item D, approval of minutes of December 12th. Motion? Have a motion to approve? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second? All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. All right. Item E1, baseball stadium refinancing. We have some people who want to speak.
Mr. Mayor?
Huh?
Mr. Mayor?
Did I fly by one?
No. I need...
E2, yes. E2, item E2.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just real quick. As I've done in the past on all other baseball-related items, I am providing the following disclosure of a potential conflict of interest. From approximately October of 2007 to February of 2010, I was employed full-time as director of corporate partnerships for SK Baseball, who operates portions of the Reno Aces Baseball Stadium. After February of 2010, I remained as an independent consultant for SK Baseball until about August of 2010. I have not been employed as either an employee or consultant for SK Baseball since August of 2010 and have not had any form of business relationship with SK Baseball since that time. Also, I do not anticipate having any form of business relationship with SK Baseball in the future. Based on that, I have consulted with the city attorney's office, and they advised me to disclose, but I will be able to vote on this item. The full disclosure is with the clerk's office, same disclosure that I've used in the past, and it's on file.
All right. Thank you very much. Any others?
Can I just make a quick comment on this item? I just want to go on the record and thank Councilman Dorch for the leadership he took on November the 14th to reconsider this item so that the board of council members would have an opportunity to better understand the history behind it, the details of it, and possibly bring forward a better deal. So I just wanted to go on record and thank Dwight for that leadership.
Okay. All right, now we'll go to public comment.
Mr. Mayor, city council, my name's Eddie Lorton for the record. I ended up on this ballpark deal, some of the things I liked and didn't like. The things that I didn't like was Mr. Katsoff is going to guarantee this loan with his trust. Therefore, he has the money, but I don't want him to go through the threat of making this stadium black, okay? We need to keep the stadium going. It's a good thing in this town, and I'm glad Mr. Dorch mentioned the fact that you worked for him. You were good to me before when the city did wrongful things and you stood up, but by the same token, I think maybe you should abstain because it's more about getting even with an ex-employer or doing what's right for the city, but you probably know more about this thing than we do, is to where if you think he has the money and he's not going to walk away because he has too much invested, then I'm for you. But if we take the chance on them going broke, then I think we need to finance this thing like Bob's saying, and it's terrible because, you know, we helped him the first time, and then this will be the second time, then the old baseball inning, strike three, you're out. So if they don't end up trying to pull any more stuff and we can keep this thing going, I mean, we have a good town and I'm for this loan, I guess, if we think it's the right thing to do. But, you know, I tried to work with them before over there. I've done big concerts, bought tours. I thought we'd do a day on the diamond. When it comes to a ballpark, they can't make it on home games alone, okay? So you have to supplement this income, and that's why we're here today, because they didn't. We tried to do like day on the diamond, do three concerts during the summer, different things, but all they tried to do is not sign nothing, pump me for information, therefore they got none and they did nothing. So I think they should do concerts, and that's what I did like about it, with the fact that now the city has more access to the stadium if we do this, so we could do concerts to supplement income, arena football. We could do festivals. There's so many ways to supplement money. That's what business is about. So I hope today that we can speak good, and if you ever need me to help with some concerts, you know my number, and if not, at least use somebody else to make it happen, because the city shouldn't be doing this. But, you know, we wasted $700,000 on Moana Ballpark, so we should spend some money if it's going to help something good happen to this town. We got Kaepernick, who's going to lead the Niners, thank God, this weekend maybe. We got the best ball team, you know, they were the number one team last year with the Aces, so Reno needs to support stuff. Sometimes they just don't. So I hope they can support it, and I hope you guys do the right thing, because you know the nuts and bolts. I don't, I just know what I read in the paper, so you know the true facts of this business arrangement. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ted Leveter? I know he's here. I'll go to Joe Tagley Burr. Joe's in opposition of it. He does not wish to speak. Ted does not wish to speak, and he's opposed of it. Mark Sullivan? Mark Sullivan? He just wanted to hear his name twice.
It was tempting not to sit there longer, so you say it several more times, but...
No, no, Mark. We only give a little advertising at a time.
Once is more than enough. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, and I'll try and be real brief here, but, you know, I think baseball's a great asset to our community, and I don't have any question about that, but I do think they need to pay their taxes before any deal is done. That actually makes me sick to my stomach to think that somebody's here in our community that haven't paid their taxes for the last two years, and it's upsetting beyond anything I can tell you. I pay my taxes. I took a loan to pay my taxes the last time I paid my taxes, because I had my identity stolen and I didn't have any money. It was, it's absolutely just unfathomable. I mean, that's the whole structure of our system, is that we pay taxes to support the infrastructure in our community. So I know you guys all attended the financial boot camp, you know, and those of you that didn't, I mean, you already knew the facts because you were on the council already, but we're $600 million in debt, so I think it's pretty hard to give money away when you have that much debt, so you have to scrutinize every dime. And I think this deal makes a strong argument for more due diligence. I mean, we need to investigate the threat of leaving. Is that a real threat, that they have somewhere that they can go? And where are they going to go? And when are they going to go? And what does that mean to us? What would those impacts be? And what are our options? How much would we really need to give them to help them to succeed here in northern Nevada? And really, how long is it for? I've heard the comment of pay back the city. I believe it was Councilwoman Dorch. And profit sharing is fair. If we got some skin in the game, we certainly should have the opportunity to get some of our return back, but how are we going to do that? And how would that be structured? So obligations should also carry over to any future owners. I don't know what the benefits are to the stadium, short-term and long-term. I know there's an economic study I heard was just getting passed around yesterday. So not really enough time to look into all those details. Everything seems to be coming so fast. I really don't think exposing the general fund is the right answer, and I don't know. I mean, we need to look at who else has done this type of thing and what's happened to them. So these other deals, I know they've been done elsewhere, and what were those results? And what works and what doesn't? And I don't think we have to reinvent the wheel. We just have to work on some of the details, and working these details out in advance of signing, not trying to work the stuff out afterwards. That's why we're here today, is because we didn't do enough advance work and enough due diligence upfront. And at the very least, I think we need to identify, and I believe it was Councilwoman Zadra that said, we need to identify where this money's coming from long-term, not, hey, five years, we think development's going to pick up and we're going to get more taxes and things are going to go well, but let's have a solid plan of where that money's going to come from, so we're not all surprised. And if it's going to come from somewhere, I mean, right now, where's it going to come from? Is it going to come from deferred maintenance on parks, on the police department, the fire department? Is it streets? There's just no telling. So I think baseball's at the top of their game right now. They just won a national championship. They've got 4,800 people a game coming in. I think it's over 800,000 people a year. If they can't make it work now, I'm not exactly sure how you're ever going to make it work, and I don't have these other communities make it work either. I saw a recent article in the RGJ, and it said that the development subsidy has been $30,000 a year, or $30,000 for every job created at the economic level at the state. In baseball, I heard they had 352 jobs, which is about $85,000 if you just do the $30 million. That's about three times what we actually pay at the state level. Whenever you're shocked at the state level. So my suggestion is that you put a little committee together, maybe everyone on the council appoint somebody to it. We get some business people in, do some due diligence, take a couple of months, maybe they meet on a weekly basis, and we can give you guys some kind of a rationale for why you would make the decision you're going to make. Thank you.
Senator, if you want to come in first, I'll bring you back to the table.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. We have a slide presentation that has bullet points, bullet points of the new agreement with baseball, as you're all aware, but for the public. We had a workshop back in November on this baseball item, and there's been lots of discussion since November on this item. So I want to go through what we've done since November is gone back, had some discussions with baseball, talked to the different council members, received input from all the council members, and what I'll present today are the bullet points of the revisions that we've made to that agreement that was originally approved on the 14th and then subsequently rescinded to give the new council more time to look at it. So the first item you see on the list is the fire station loan. Under the previous agreement, the fire station loan was amortized over a 10-year period. Under this new agreement, that would shorten to five years, which matches what the fire station amortization loan is currently. So the new fire station loan would be wrapped into the overall agreement. The amortization would stay the same, so for the first five years, the payments that are made would go to relieve that debt, just like they would if we didn't enter into an agreement with baseball today. Under number two, the ticket tax, under the previous agreement, there was some language in the agreement that said that the stadium authority would enact a ticket tax in an amount approved by the team, and there was some other language in there. Under this new agreement, that ticket tax language has been stricken, and basically what we're doing was we're following back... language has been stricken. And basically, what we're doing is we're following back on NRS. So we're falling back on what is in statute when it comes to the ticket tax. There is also language in the current agreement that states that if a ticket tax is passed, that it does not offset the city's payments. In other words, if there was a ticket tax raised, it does not reduce our payment obligations under this agreement. Item number three, the revised payment schedule. In the original agreement, the payments tiered up. In the first two years, they were $850,000, then they went to $900,000 after two years, and then they went to $1 million and then 1.1 million. What this new agreement does is it extends that $850,000 payment out. Instead of just two years, it extends it out over a five-year period. And that $850,000 matches up, part of the reason that we did that is it matches up with the debt service payments that we have on the fire station loan currently. So currently, we have approximately a $750,000 a year general fund appropriation to pay back the fire station loan. In addition, there's an estimate of $100,000 in RDA funds available. So for the first five years, the payments to baseball match the current payments that we would have, even if we didn't enter into this agreement on the fire station. So that's bullet point number three. Number four, the right to cure. In the previous agreement, we didn't have any provisions in there for the right to cure. What has been added to this are two different provisions. The first is that if the council does not appropriate for the payments to baseball, that we have 90 days to cure that. There was, in the previous agreement, there was no language with the right to cure. The second right to cure that was included in there is that if the council does appropriate, and somewhere along the line, we miss a payment or are late on a payment, presumably due to a clerical error, whatever, that we then have 60 days to cure on that. So those two provisions were added to the new agreement that we're looking at today as well. The limited guarantee, as in the previous agreement, we do have a limited guarantee. What's been added in the new agreement is language that we believe strengthens that guarantee, that that guarantee lives on with the estate of the guarantors. And so that language has been tightened up to ensure that it goes on and passes on to the estate of the baseball owners. Naming rights, there's been a provision added in the new agreement that if there are naming rights, if the baseball owners receive naming rights, funds for naming rights for the stadium in excess of $300,000, the city gets 10% of that in excess of $300,000. So...
Of the total amount.
Of the total amount. So if there were naming rights worth $350,000, the city would get $35,000 of those. If there's naming rights of $299,000, we would get zero. The property tax abatement, in the previous agreement, there was language in there that stated that the agency and the city would use their best efforts to cause the county to effectuate the abatement of property taxes. That has been taken out of this agreement, so there is no reference to the city helping baseball abate property taxes. That has been taken out. The provision related to special events, I know this was a big item for a lot of the council members. In the previous agreement, we were limited to 12 events per year. They were only for civic or nonprofit events, and they couldn't, we couldn't use the stadium 10 days before or 10 days after a baseball game. That language has been stricken from the agreement, and what the new agreement has in it is that the city and the developer will mutually agree on events, and that the developer will help to manage those events. And so basically, it opens it up that if there are days within the baseball season when the city wants to bring an event, and it doesn't have to be nonprofit, it could be a for-profit, that we enter into an agreement with baseball, either a profit-sharing agreement or reimbursement for costs of managing the facilities for that event. So that's what's in the new agreement for special events.
Can I expand on that?
Sure.
It also is an opportunity, we, let me go back to number seven. We fully believe property taxes need to be paid and aren't going to work to assist in abating those. Number eight, with regards to special events, there was a lot of people that we listened to in the last two months in the community that had great concern of this asset being fully utilized. In other words, why aren't we using this wonderful stadium for things other than just baseball? So this was a big one, that we went in and got the language changed so that we can better bring forth events during the season, but also understanding that postseason, when we could have a concert series in September, October, when we know we have great weather here, when a stage setup and teardown, it makes it more fiscally possible to have a series of concerts. I don't know about you, but I think that's a fantastic idea, and I am all for supporting these types of events that can generate revenue. So that was a big part, I just wanted to say, as a council, bringing forward was expanding our opportunities in revenue-generating events for the city.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Onto number nine, the National Bowling Stadium and the RTC site claims. Under the previous agreement, those claims were released upon the first payment made by the city to the developer. In the new agreement, it's structured that upon execution of this agreement, the developer agrees to waive the rights that they currently have to the National Bowling Stadium and the RTC site. So those are waived immediately, whereas before, they were waived upon receipt of our first payment. And the final item on this list is capital improvements. Under the previous agreement, the developers were required for, to provide maintenance and other things. There were council members that felt that we needed to strengthen that language for capital improvements. At some point down the road, you have to replace, you know, heating and air conditioning units and those sorts of things. And so there was language added in this agreement to strengthen their requirement that the developers have to provide for the proper capital improvements as well as maintenance moving forward.
Yeah, and this, and again, this is just an expansion of if we get, they take beautiful care of the stadium and now. We wanted to make sure year 15, 20, 25, when we got towards the end of this, that there wasn't some, no longer need to step forward and maintain capital improvement. So the standards and requirements and penalties will be spelled out in the stadium agreement and the operating agreements with the stadium authority so that we can maintain this asset to its best possible standards.
Anything else, Mr. Green?
No, and Mr. Mayor, the only other thing I would say is that the other provisions, I mean, there are other provisions that I didn't speak of on this list that are still in place. There is the land and the stadium under the current agreement, or the old agreement that we had with baseball. At the end of the agreement, they ended up owning the stadium. Under this new agreement, the city of Reno will, the city of Reno or stadium authority, I looked at Jonathan, will end up owning the land and the stadium. So there are provisions that were continued over from the other agreement that I'm not speaking to. I'm really just speaking to the changes, but I just want to make people aware. Yeah, and that includes the guarantee, and I spoke to that a little bit, where we revised the guarantee. But what was in the old agreement and remains in this agreement is that if baseball at any time decides that they want to leave Reno, we get the stadium free and clear of any liens or any debts. And so that also stays in this current agreement, that if they leave before the 30-year agreement expires, that the city of Reno gets the stadium, or the city of Reno Stadium Authority, I looked at Jonathan again, but I don't want to get that wrong, but that we get the stadium and the land that the stadium sits on, which is not true under the old agreement with baseball.
All right. Any other staff report? Okay, comments from any council members?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hill, you're first.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say, Councilwoman Jordan, I think you did a very, a very good job. I think, you know, I know you put in a lot of time and a lot of personal time, and even had a birthday party that you missed out on. And so I really, really appreciate your hard work. I have to say, I still, I have, there are some issues for me that are still very difficult for me to wrap my head around. It's still $30 million from the general fund, and that really concerns me. I cannot walk out of here today and look at police, fire, and senior services, knowing that we could cut them because we funded a baseball stadium. So I, there's some sticking points. I would, I think the stadium is absolutely beautiful. It is a gorgeous stadium. I would love for baseball to stay here. But I think that I would like to see a deal that is a little bit more skin in the game and a little bit more even-footed for my liking. So, and I noticed Mr. Katsov is here. Can I ask you a question, looking at this deal? One of the things that I would really, that was really important for me is if, that if you leave, would you be willing to pay back the general fund? And that makes us feel better that you are committed to staying here, instead of us constantly feeling like, you know, we are being held hostage in a way.
Jerry Katsov, owner of the Reneways, says, I just need to comment. When you say we don't have skin in the game, we have $90 million of our own skin in the game right now.
I get that. I'm just saying more of an even playing field with the city.
No, but you make that comment.
Sorry if you misconstrued that, but I'm just saying that.
I think the whole world would misconstrue that statement.
Well, I'm just telling you now. I'm sorry you felt that way.
Okay, so we have $90 million invested in the project, okay?
Sure.
And what we agreed to give the stadium to the city, free and clear of all debt, if we were to leave on our own, if you continue to pay. So far, we've been here four years, we've not gotten paid. So there's more likelihood that you won't pay than we'll leave if you do pay. So we really have no intention to leave if you live up to the commitment to make the payments. But at the same time, we've given you the stadium for free. So if 20 years from now, the world changes and baseball is just no longer a viable project in Reno, but we've been here for 20 years and brought this enjoyment to the community, why would we have to be obligated, or why would Herb Simons Estate have to be obligated to pay back that 20 million? It's just unreasonable to me for you to ask that, and it's not agreeable by us.
Okay. Could I just qualify?
Yes.
Mr. Katsov, you indicated that the city hasn't paid like we reneged on our portion of the existing agreement, and that is not so. The existing agreement was based on revenues from sales taxes and the activity within the redevelopment district, which has not existed. The foundation of the agreement was based on revenue in, revenue out. So we did not choose to not respond to our responsibilities. We met all of them as they were qualified in the original agreement.
Yeah, I really don't want to get into a public debate with you.
No, we're not.
We obviously don't agree with that statement, so, which is fine.
Any other questions or discussion? Ms. Zadra?
Mr. Manager, and actually, Mr. Chisel, where are you? There you are. I've been asking, as was cited even in public comment, where would the money come from within the general fund? And I think we still need to have that discussion here today for me to get any closer to a comfort level. I will preface by saying this agreement is considerably better than the one that was in front of us three months ago. And certainly, I appreciate the efforts that have gone in on both sides, absolutely, but I still have questions. So one of the things I asked for is show me the expectations for how the economy, how our revenue sources are going to potentially grow. Gosh, let's hope so, since we haven't seen much of that in the last four years. That would justify the thought of taking money out of the general fund. And you put a schedule together that I received this morning that shows activity projections through '17. Can you review that and detail your assumptions there, please?
Robert Chisel, Finance Director. First off, currently, we're spending about 750, we are spending $750,000 on the fire station relocation loan. And for the first five years, we'll be paying $850,000. So the difference that we would be looking for is the $100,000. As far as the projections go, we, this year, we're looking at projections of 3% growth in C-tax. So far this year, it's been up about 5%. November just came in and it was up approximately 7% over last year. As you know, January, or I should say, December is going to be our big month where we see where we are, because that's where most of our revenue comes from, for sales tax. Property tax, which is another big earner for the general fund, we have not gotten any information from the assessor at this point. Early indications show that it's going to be flat, the property tax, for next year, even though, as you all hear, property values are increasing. There's a certain lag time in the property values. So we would project in the following year that probably a 2% to 3% increase in property taxes for that 2014, 2015 timeframe. So where the money would come from, you know, as the general fund is a general fund, it would come from all the sources of revenue that are coming into the general fund. For the first five years, it'd be the additional $100,000 that we would be looking to.
The first five years is a comfort zone for me. I can get there. It's year six through 10 that I'm very uncomfortable with, which is the 1.15 million approximate, which comes to like a 26%, 27% increase. Talk to me about the expenses that are currently coming toward us. I would liken them to even a tsunami, as it relates to some of the PERS and health kinds of considerations, not even the capex yet. Those are ones that we have some very risky decisions to make. Do we continue to push off making some of those improvements? But these are ones that we have no consideration at all. Talk to me about what's in front of us right now that we're still looking for funding sources to meet obligations that we have no consideration in at all. We absolutely have to pay them. Let's talk about those and what that total figure would come to.
Well, I, Robert Chisel, again, I'm not sure if, I think you're referring to our OPEB obligations and our workers' comp obligations. Currently, we are doing pay-as-you-go for our OPEB obligations, which is allowed according to state rules and according to GASB, Governmental Accounting Standards Board. In the future, we will have to look at starting to fund those OPEB obligations. Those are the retiree health benefits that we have. And that, you know, depending on how many retirees we have and the actuaries come in, it could be anywhere up to $10 million a year. We also have our workers' comp, but we, if you recall, last year, we had a negative cash balance. We did correct that last year, so that is currently no negative cash. But there are heart and lung issues with police, fire, that eventually we will have to start addressing or seek legislative changes for.
And what kind of a price tag is associated with that?
The heart and lung and the workers' comp is currently, has actuarial reserves for, and that includes IBNR of about $36 million.
And then capex, the ones that are most critical, where we run in a huge risk putting them much further out than we already have. Where are we there?
Well, I would probably defer to our Public Works Director to talk about our capital needs, you know, but it, you know, so it could be anywhere from, I think the number we're talking about was 20 million a year, is in the depreciation negativity. But again, it depends on what you consider, you know, you know, a need.
What would you consider a need?
I'd refer to our Public Works Director on that.
Thank you, John.
For the record, John Flansford, Director of Public Works. As far as capital, we break it out into our buildings. We look at our streets. We look at our sewer and collection and treatment. And obviously, with sewer, we have our sewer fund. Streets, we use our street enterprise. So we kind of would zero that down more into our facilities. And, you know, we have some very immediate needs in some of, in some of recreation facilities, but overall, we're... facilities, but overall, we're, we're, probably, Robert's twenty million a year for a few years is probably a reasonable number to look at for the overall facilities. But I, I think that probably around forty, forty-five, fifty million dollars is, is, would probably get us a long way out of where we are in terms of the current condition of our buildings with where we want them to be.
Thank you, John. Robert, if we were, if the numbers stayed static, and today was year eighteen, right? Yep. Was December first of 2018, and we had to meet that one point one-five million dollar payment, what would your recommendation be of static numbers? Where, what, what would you recommend to us that we look at cutting to meet that?
You know, I would look to the council as to see what the priorities of the council is to determine, you know, what to be funded and what not to be funded, and fund those items that the council feels is important first, and then go from there. I, I mean, I would look to, to the council's direction.
May I just make a, a quick comment? You know, there's, there's a million variables that happen on both the revenue and the expenditure side that we, we can't fully put a number to and quantify and know. I would offer the same of removing this asset and watching what happens with the economic impacts of not having baseball here. And, and all of the things that are growing and, and starting to expand due to having this asset, which, which can't be quantified purely by dollars. This is a civic and family venue in our community, which I, it's, it's, it's a very difficult thing to measure, but to not measure it doesn't do this justice. So, you need to, I just encourage everybody to consider the civic and family and community value of this. And also keep in mind, we are on the national stage as we decide this issue today. We've seen lots of numbers that show that a lot of businesses are looking to move to Nevada.
And no argument, absolutely no argument.
Yes, I would just like them, yes, but I would like them to know that we're, we see them, they see us, and we understand some of the variables, the unknowns, and the things that can't be drawn down to the bottom line of a financial sheet. And those are the tough decisions.
And that's exactly where I'm trying to go with my questions of Robert, is I'm going to both extremes. I started with the worst extreme, and that is, if we have static, what would need to be cut? And we continue to get that response from, from staff, because it is difficult. But we can't be afraid of looking at that condition when we make this decision today. We owe it to our community. We have that responsibility to our community to look at both extremes. And you're saying that that would be ours to cut, and we would choose if it's police officers, or, or parks, or, or whatever it is. But you agree that major programs would be cut in order to, to...
But we have, we have the right to not approve this.
I understand that.
If we think we've got to cut something, we have, I mean, a lot of hypothetical questions. I've never been able to forecast out more than three years and be accurate. But the hypothetical questions, and they're very good questions, don't misunderstand me. But we do have the right every year not to fund it if we have to...
Clearly.
Cut somebody.
Clearly, I understand that. But we still need to address those questions today. So, that's the far extreme. Add to that, the risk if we chose not to do everything within our powers to keep baseball here. Part of the thing that has just crippled our redevelopment abilities downtown, and the RDAs in particular, is the property tax decreases that the downtown properties have received from the state. If we were not to approve baseball, where do you think those would even dip to? To what lower point would those taxes dip to?
You know, I, I, again, it's, it's hard to speculate, but, you know, if, if some, baseball did leave, you would definitely see a decrease in property values, again, in that, that, particularly in that area. Again, I, for me to predict how much it would go down, I really couldn't guess. I, I think it would have a direct impact, of course, on the, the neighboring properties.
And, and wouldn't we also, I certainly didn't take it off the table if we come to an agreement today, that we, we would certainly pursue other creative financing avenues for this as we move forward, whether it was a special assessment district, a, a parking fee. I know there's issues at both the federal and the state legislative levels that may, may very well assist us in this regards. But again, those are crystal balls that, we, we don't stop working towards those.
Absolutely. I mean, I think we all feel very strongly about that, that we will do whatever it takes to find those creative funding options. But I want to know, what are you going to do in the next five years that, you know, obviously, this hasn't worked out for you? So, what, what are you going to do differently in the next five years to make this successful?
Actually, the baseball team has worked out really well. The problem is, is that there's too much debt on the baseball team because we haven't gotten any of the subsidies. So, this subsidy will help us refinance baseball so that we don't have the debt service that eats up every penny that baseball makes right now. That's what we'll do.
Okay. The, the other thing that I want to mention, too, is yesterday, I got an economic impact study across my desk at a very late hour. So, I have not had a chance to look at that. I would very much like the opportunity to look at that. And also, I, I felt very strongly about having independent counsel look at this. And I'm not quite sure where we're at with that. And that, something was important to me as well. And I, from what I understand, I believe we have to vote on this. You know, I'm, I'm not quite sure how that works, but I, I think that's an important part of, of this piece.
Ms. Breckus.
Mr. Manager, I don't know if you want to answer a question about outside counsel, or we take that under a different, you know, item. But I'll, I'll leap in with a question. At our last meeting, we adopted a legislative operations plan, and we put some points in there related to an emergent issue related to collective bargaining, fact-finding, ability to pay. It's not an issue that hasn't impacted us, but I guess it's on the radar for other jurisdictions. I'm, I'm concerned, we also, at our last meeting, hired some labor relations folks to assist our human resources department. And what I understand is going to be a big job, looking at our collective bargaining agreements that would be all opened up this year. And in this emergent issue of fact-finding ability to pay, obviously, a fact-finder is not going to be looking at our debt, right? Because the debt is debt. But this forward committing agreement, you know, that goes out thirty years, a million, do we think that, and, and with this discretion at each budget cycle, how, how do we think an arbitrator would look at that? Is that money that's on the pot? Or is it money that's not? Because it doesn't have bonded, you know, underwriting behind it, you know, reliance of the market behind it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Breckus, I mean, it's, it's very difficult to predict what an arbitrator is going to, going to look at and say whether or not you have the ability to pay. I mean, I would think from my perspective, that if you have an agreement in place and you have an obligation over thirty years, it seems to me it would take that funding off the table. But I know there are cases where arbitrations have been lost when other entities have looked to pre-fund OPEB liabilities and other things. So, it's, I mean, it's, it's difficult to say what an arbitrator would do. I mean, my opinion is, if you have an obligation and you have an agreement to that obligation, I don't know how an arbitrator could look at that. But again, it's hard to say what they would do.
I would think, I would think that if, when we're doing our budgets, if we can't make the payment, if it's going to affect fire, police, parks, or anything, then we would go to SK Baseball and say, "We can't pay this year." But I mean, to sit and, I just think that that's the way it would work. You wouldn't take away from fire, police, or anything. They would be first on the budget, and then you would come down and add baseball to it. If it's not there, then you vote no to baseball.
I guess I'll, I'll weigh in one more comment I have, is, you know, I appreciate the efforts to simplify this deal, because I think it's very complex, and I think it moved a little bit in the right direction. I'm not entirely swayed about the special events argument. You know, our, our special events function has been tremendously cut back. We are paying two point seven million dollars out of the, our C-tax on the bowling stadium, the event center, and the ballroom. My preliminary investigations on those properties, and I've not been provided the operating agreements for those with the RCVA that I've been asking for, but, is that those are not utilized. Bartley Ranch down at the county, not, they gave up on their concert series. I just, you know, maybe we'll get a real great Bill Graham-type of promoter in there, and I would love that, but I'm not convinced that that is that much given attraction to our ability, because I'm not sure our capacity is there. So, that's, that's one thing. And another thing I see is, I looked up the history of this team, and it was formed in nineteen sixty-nine under another name in Tucson. And then they went for a couple more year, you know, a good long run under another name, and then they came here, the Sidewinders, the Turos, and then they came here. The league in which it's in has been here since nineteen oh-three, which is a long time for a professional league. But going out thirty years, it makes me think that, you know, one fundamental is, is true in sports, the professional and even in the college level, my experience, is that things change. Teams change locations, leagues change. I used to run for the Big East at Villanova. That's a Big East you wouldn't recognize today. And I'm just wondering if there would be some fundamental dynamics going out to thirty years where, you know, the team may want, not want to be here, we may not really want the team to be here as a collective community, or the league may reconfigure and have a different incarnation. And, and that's a concern dealing with this sector, that, that is a fundamental that strikes me of, makes me nervous about a long-term commitment.
Okay. Neoma?
Go ahead, Dwight.
We have a session here.
Yes. Any other questions right now? Then we'll go to comments. Neoma?
I just wanted to say, you know, this, this is a very complicated deal. In the, in the, in the papers that we first looked at as a new council, they were about a foot and a half thick. And I think everyone, maybe in hindsight of the original deal, could say, could things have done, been done a bit better? Possibly. And I think the time afforded the new council in the last few months to look at this, to get a better deal, was done. And, you know, so goes the nature of any negotiations. Not everybody gets everything they want. And I feel like the value of this in our community and the continued economic vitality of our city hinges in part on this stadium. So, I, I just urge everybody to look at, from thirty thousand feet, and I know a lot of it's crystal ball-type stuff, but I just encourage everybody to look at it in that view.
Okay. Already, we know that if it stays here, there's a hotel going to be built. So, that's going to create some economic development people. Any other comments right now?
Yeah, if I could just weigh in really quick.
Yes, sir.
Like the other city councils spent a lot of time thinking about this, and I know there's, you know, we spent a lot of time working on it, so thanks again, Neoma. A lot of different moving parts. And the consequences, like Hillary, about where we stand in the future in terms of working with our, our other service providers as a city. And I know this is a lot cleaner than it was proposed from the last city council in November, so that, that makes me feel quite a bit better, in terms of how much cleaner it is, the overall guarantee that was provided to us now, not only as an individual, but amongst the three, and going to the estate. And also, taking a step back and looking at the overall economic development for the Trying to take a viewpoint from the stance, not only from regionally, but nationally, is to recognize that if a stadium were to go black, how would that view us for the long-term future? And the possibility, as Mr. Mayor just kind of hinted to, that new development may now pursue surrounding the, the stadium to help cover those general fund obligations, to fill those gaps. And so, again, I commend the, the city council for working so hard on all these different moving parts, and, and hopefully, the long-term relationship with Mr. Katzoff. If things change here in the near future, that we'll continue with those and look at other avenues if, if, you know, if we don't, if things don't work out, so to say, as a, in the crystal ball world. Thanks.
Mr. Dorch.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, this is, this issue is, a lot of passion in this issue out in the community and on both sides. And, and Mark, I guess, I don't know if Mark Sullivan left or not, but, you know, he asked if there's the threat of leaving, and that's, that's why we're here. I mean, the, the threat of leaving, I think, is real. And I think if it wasn't, I don't think we'd be having this discussion today. And that's, and that's really part of the problem, is, you know, the, the developers don't want to honor the current agreement that we have, which is why I wanted to put some language in there, that if they decide not to honor the next agreement, then there's some penalties for it. Which is why I asked for the language that they would pay back the city, anything above the fire station loan that, that was paid out if they decided to leave. And, and the developer made some comments about giving us the stadium for free, and, and I think that's wrong, too. I think, you know, he says he's got ninety million dollars in this, but there's also a thirty million dollar bond out there that's being paid with rental car tax. And, you know, now he's asking to wrap the remaining fifty-five million dollars into one payment, and in reality, he's going to get the restaurants and bars in the Freight House District for free. So, I, I mean, you look at the deal, and it's not perfect. I mean, this deal, there's, there's, in my opinion, there's a lot of flaws in this agreement. And it comes back to the, what I said about Mark Sullivan, when he asked, is there a threat of leaving? And I think there is. And if I didn't think there was, this would be a very easy decision to make. But that threat of leaving and the threat of having that stadium dark would be a real blow to this community.
But isn't that a shame?
Let's, let him finish, please.
Absolutely. Absolutely, it is. But in the same token, as conversations I've had with, with several of you, is, I think that we've got to put a reasonable solution on the table, come up with a reasonable solution, put a reasonable solution on the table, and be done with it. I, I mean, I think, I, I think it's, it's important to this community that that area of town and that stadium remains intact, and that, that, that everything over there continues to happen in the way it's happened.
Okay. Ms. Shivi, do you have something else?
I, we got this deal on Thursday. We haven't had it very long. And I understand, everyone wants to move forward. I, I totally get that. I mean, this has consumed us since, since we started day one. I was elected to represent everyone, not just a very small few people. So, this decision has not been easy, especially this one is our first one off the bat. I, I definitely think there is a base, a, a deal to be had on baseball. I don't feel it's this one. And like I said, Mr. Katzoff, you've, you've built a beautiful stadium. You really did. But, you know, I own a couple of businesses, and no one told me that if my, my businesses failed, that I, that someone would help me. There's a lot of small businesses out there that have been put in a very difficult position and have closed their doors because they quite frankly, you know, they didn't have the funding. And so, it's really hard for me. But even more so, honestly, even more so than anything, this is, this is speculation, just like we did in two thousand and seven, or, you know, seven years ago. You know, we, we looked at, at the economy, and everyone started buying houses and boats, and that's what got us into trouble. So, for me, this is, this is very difficult, and I would like to make, take more time. And unfortunately, I'd like to continue it. I don't know how you guys feel, but, like I said, we got this deal on Thursday. I know everyone's tired of mulling this over, but I, I, I just, like I said, my sticking point is that if you leave, will you pay back the general fund? And I, I'm with Sharon, you know, the five years, we are obligated to pay that fire station loan. We absolutely are. I totally, totally get that. But what happens after? And that's, that's a tough one. We don't know.
But in year six, you have the right to, after looking at all your budgets and stuff, deciding where, and I'll be gone.
Sure.
But you have a chance to look at your budget and see if you're going to afford it.
But do we want to do that to that council?
Hmm?
Do we want to do that to that council at that time? I don't know.
I, I guess I feel like if, we're never going to make a decision if we have, our expectation is to have absolute clear, solid clarity for everything as we move forward, and that's why this is such a difficult decision. So, the points in which the council members have brought forward as concerns, those were brought to the table during the negotiations, and some things had to be forgiven in order to get others. So, it's not as if these are new concerns. They were brought to the table, and as I said before, negotiations are just that, and it's called compromise. And I just urge everybody to... that. And it's called compromise. And I just urge everybody to see the full picture and the impacts should baseball leave, which they can.
Ms. Dargado, did you have something? Okay. Ms. Adra?
I do. I'll finish with my questions from earlier. Had, was there in the negotiating process, was there, and Mr. Katsov, this could be for you as, as well as, as the two council members that were in the negotiating, was there ever discussion about the face ticket price and increasing that? Not the ticket tax, but the ti, the face ticket price? Was there ever, ever any discussion about some revenue generation from that? And is that something that you would be willing to, to consider? Is one question. What would be your consideration? I, their, their answer would be, was it ever discussed? Was it ever discussed?
I think back when Mr. Hescheff and Mr. Izzy were doing negotiations over the last year and a half, they tried to get every penny they could from wherever they could. And Mr. Hescheff's a pretty good negotiator.
So would it be a fair conclusion, your resistance to come to the podium and answer that question is you're probably not interested in raising the, the ticket price, the face ticket price?
Well, that could run off business.
Understand that.
So I think that's a private enterprise decision that they have to make as they go along, whether or not to raise their prices.
Absolutely. Same decision that we have to make, raising our prices or cutting services.
See, I don't see us cutting services to pay the million dollars. If I have to, we would go to Mr. Katsov and ask for forbearance, as he's done before on the fire department. And we wouldn't, we wouldn't cut our services. We would cut, vote not to fund him. And we could do things like that.
So we'd be in no better position in five years than we could potentially happen today if the deal wasn't struck. I'm trying to understand what we achieve by approving basically a five-year deal. And maybe that's what we should be looking at. Maybe we should split this vote into three parts. A five-year deal, the first five years, the
I agree.
second five years and the remaining 20 years. I mean, maybe there would be a different kind of a discussion that would be had if we did that. Was there consideration for, rather than going from the 850 for the first five years, then to a million, then to the 1.15, reverse the order of the, the increases? Right now, it's 850,000 a year to the 1.15 million and then down to one. Could we reverse that and go 850 to 1 million to 1.1? Was something like that discussed?
Mr. Mayor, if I might jump in here a little bit?
Yes, please.
That was discussed early on, again, prior to the election with, with previous council members. And what we were told at the time is that what baseball's trying to do is, is they have $55 million that they have to refinance. And so they, they need a 30-year commitment to refinance that over 30 years. So a five-year agreement will not, will not put them in a place where they can refinance that. In addition to that, what we were told at the time, because we did talk about that, was that they needed the 10 million in the first 10 years. So the way the deal is structured, that's in front of you today, is it's the 850 for the first five years and then, you know, the 1.1, so that after 10 years, there's $10 million available. What I will also say is that based on, you know, the present value of, of money, 30 million over 30 years allows baseball to finance around 17 million. So if the total refinancing is 55 million, we're really in it for a little less than a third. The other two-thirds really is on baseball to come up with the other two-thirds. So when you talk about ticket prices and you talk about other things, I mean, that's something they'll have to consider as they try and make up that other two-thirds.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Mayor, you know, I, I understand they've got their financial financing situation and, and the way they've stated is the manager stated. But in terms of thinking about a five-year deal, you know, if your point is in year six, the council can go one way or the other on, on funding it the next time, then what's wrong, that next year, what's wrong with a bifurcated deal? You know, a five-year deal of what we owe and maybe, and I'm a big fan of resolutions because they're statements of intent, of powers that you have. And a resolution that at post-six years to 10, we would, one, see if maybe, you know, this hotel is going to kick off some TIF, St. Mary's is going to kick off some TIF, there's going to be more TIF, look to the redevelopment agency. I've been a proponent of the, you know, remarkable job that was done to tax downtown properties to plow improvements into the bowling stadium. That was a big lift last year to find a revenue source last session. And when that winds down, that does not sunset. And maybe we could go down to the legislature and see about putting that into our other obligations in the tourism improvement districts. So I would support a five-year deal as outlined. And then a side resolution of intent that we would look for the year six through 10 to see what resources are available. And maybe that's binded into an agreement or just standalone resolution of intent. But I think that's the approach that I would, I'm comfortable with. If, if baseball's willing to, you know, take it from there and we vote negative today.
Ms. Jordan, you have?
Um, I, you know, I just go back to
Any further discussion before, okay, Ms. Jordan?
You know, I just go back to the, the impacts of watching this community asset leave and fully understanding and quantifying what that would look like. And, and again, going back to the civic and community and family value of this in our entire region. This is not just Reno. This is an entire region's asset. And I certainly approach it in that regard. And I, I appreciate that we are on a national stage and that other companies are looking to see what we're going to do today and how supportive we are or are not going to be to these types of venues. So with that, I would like to make a motion. Oh.
What's that?
Do we need to do the AGs?
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. You can take these out of order if you choose, Mr. Mayor. You just have to vote separately on each item.
Make sure I'm reading this correctly. I move to approve the baseball stadium refinancing agreement as presented to us today. Ordinance.
Ordinance.
That's item E22, am I correct, just for the record?
Yes.
Do I have a second? Have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Excuse me, we'll have some discussion. Yes, I don't know why I'm jumping.
I apologize. We've, we've beat this to death. As I stated earlier, I mean, I've got issues with this agreement. I, I think the fact that we've got the fire station loan narrowed down to five years, which is something I had asked for several months ago and didn't get it in the original agreement, is, is a good thing. I mean, because now it doesn't put us any worse off over the next five years. I mean, there's an extra $100,000 going out. But it doesn't put us any worse off over the next five years as we make these determinations. In the, in the other agreement where this was extended out to 10 years and we had that fire station obligation for the full 10 years, I, I had a real hard time with that. There are things I wish we could have gotten in this agreement. But I, I, I mean, clearly we're not going to get them at this point. I, I just don't think we're going to get them. And I, I kind of felt like we're being held hostage here on this. And it's not a good feeling. But it comes back to what I said earlier. And that's we can't let this stadium go dark. I've tried to get as much as I could in this. I've, I've tried to push and claw and get more and more into this.
You didn't. I wish you'd quit clawing me in the back.
I, I just don't think we're going to get any further than where we're at right now.
Any other public comment? Ms. Adra?
Can I have confirmation from legal that if in year one through five of this agreement or year six, a future council determines this is no longer a good deal, what kind of liability does the city face and what kind of credit risking does the city face?
Um, the way, the, well, there's two types of liability, as you were. There's the credit risk liability, which is talked about in the staff report and that we've talked about in the past. Whereas if we enter into this agreement and then for whatever reason we decide not to appropriate down the line, you know, a Standard and Poor's, a Moody's, somebody can view that as, you know, the city of Reno not, not taking its financial management seriously and, you know, reneging on this deal, you know, and which would have the impact of decre, you know, lowering our credit rating. So that's the kind of financial risk. The, then as far as the legal risk with the failure to appropriate, what happens is that this agreement would essentially turn the clock back to where we were under the existing agreements today. So like in year five, you know, all the rights and liabilities that existed under those agreements would spring back to life and would be, you know, the type of thing that, you know, would come back to life. So whatever liability exists there would exist five years from now.
So to simplify, you're saying that if this council or a future council at any time decides we can no longer afford these payments, there would be no legal risk with them making that decision?
I don't know if I quite understand the question. I would just say that you wouldn't be in any, you'd be in the same position that you are five years from now, today, five years from now. So there would be things that would have, would happen in terms of potential monies owing that you would theoretically be on the hook for, you know, out of the redevelopment agency, out of the TIF agreements, that type of thing. But at the end of the day, it would be, I mean, that would be the question. It would be, it would be, you know, under the existing agreements, what would that liability be?
So you would agree with the statement that if that were, if that decision were to be made at a later date, the city would be in no worse a position than it is today? Could potentially be in a better position because of the, the advancements in economic development, but we would be in no worse of a situation than we are today?
Um, I'd, I'd hesitate to say that. I mean, I would say that, I mean, we've talked about the credit piece. So I mean, that would definitely be out there, you know, and that would be a change from where we are today to where we are five years from now. Beyond that, I would just, I mean, it would be the type, I can't say exactly, but I can say the agreement is structured in a way to make it as airtight as possible, that it operates like a forbearance agreement. And to the extent that we do not fulfill the obligation to make those payments in future years, the clock ticks back and we are where we are today, except for five years from now. So that's, that's the intent. And now, I mean, that's about as far as I can say or about as comfortable as I can say that, so.
And at this point, we're the ones that have a trigger point in this proposed agreement. We have that trigger point of renewing it every year, re-agreeing to it every year.
Yeah, the way that, that would work is that you approve your tentative budgets before about July, June 1st every year. So that would be your, your window for appropriation. You would, if, and then the payments are structured biannually, I think, in December and in June. So the payments would come in those periods of time. So you
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah.
Is there a trigger point built into it that I have not seen for the developer?
As far as, I'm sorry, as far as?
For reviewing, reneging, obviously reconsideration can be requested at any time. But is there a trigger point built in for them that I have not seen in here? Am I missing something?
I don't know. I don't know if I understand your question. I can tell you that there still is, if the county doesn't fund their portion, then the developer has the option under the agreements that you're considering today to decline the entire agreement. So if, if, if that's the trigger point that you're referring to, so there potentially is, yeah, I mean, if the developer does not get what he needs out of the county and decides that it doesn't pencil, that broader refinance, he can decline the deal at that point and we'd be back to where we are again today.
But under the, under the deal, because of the miscalculation of taxes in RDA 1 and 2 by the county, there's possibly a $60 million lawsuit against the city or the county.
That's one of the, that's one of the items in this today is that it, it cleans up that lawsuit that we had with the county, with the school district on monies that were diverted from the redevelopment agency that went to, you know, the other taxing agencies. Developer potentially has some claims that he could bring as part of this, as far as it goes to the city and the agency. He is waiving all those claims, so he cannot come back to the agency or the city on those claims. So that's, as the mayor talks about, that's
He could sue us, but give us indemnity. So, because they'd have to go through us to get to the county.
Yeah, I, I mean, how that would work out, I mean, he doesn't have a deal with the county or with the school district. So, you know, but this wraps up that liability from the, from the standpoint of the city and the RDA books.
And the, and the, if an agreement has reached today, it triggers an, a payment of the property taxes, correct?
Right.
That's not specifically in the agreement, but that has been the representation that the property taxes will get paid.
And they haven't been, they've been negotiating to reduce their property tax because they were considering this baseball park the same as they were AT&amp;T Park. And so that's been the discussion that's been going on.
Right. So was there?
Any other discussion? Any other questions?
I'll just
Yes, sir.
I don't know that I got, understood that Sharon got the question answered correctly. In simple terms, part of what I heard was, the city, in this current agreement, the city has to approve this million dollars, whatever figure it is, a year.
Correct.
A year.
Correct.
And if that clause was not in this agreement, wouldn't the city be in worse shape completely at some point if they didn't make the?
Technically, they couldn't enter into the agreement because it's the difference between a debt obligation, which were, there's some additional state law requirements about if you're going to enter into a long-term agreement to pay a debt, you had, there's some additional things that you have to do. By having the annual appropriation, it allows you to enter into that long-term agreement. But what, what the annual appropriation provides for is if you don't, if you don't appropriate, it extinguishes whatever debt on that 30-year contract that you had. So as far as the agreement goes, that you're looking at today with the developer, if there was a failure to appropriate, that would terminate that agreement. But as part of that, the underlying agreements that are currently in place with the RDA relative to tax increment finance and that type of stuff, those would come back into force. So the existing, the, the deal you're looking at today essentially says those agreements are going to be held in abeyance for as long as the city makes payments of the, you know, under the scheduled table of amortization, like a million dollars a year. But if there's, the payments stop, then those agreements come back to life and whatever rights and remedies and duties and obligations that are under those agreements are back on the table. So like tax increment owed would potentially be something that the developer could come back and ask for and would have a contractual right for that. But that's essentially the position that you are in today. It's, it's, it's the existing agreements. Does that make sense?
And thank you, Mr. Scott. That is the clarification that I was looking for.
Apologies.
No, I understand. So just for statement of, of explanation, in my mind, I will be voting today for what I consider to be a one-year or a five-year agreement. In my mind, that's what I'm voting on today.
Okay. Any other discussion? Oscar?
Again, like the rest of the city council, anxious to see, you know, hear the next minute or so of what we're going to end up with. But the, taking a step back and looking at the current agreement for what it is today, from what it was in the past, it's, it's just that much more cleaner. And that's what allows me to kind of see it that way of, and knowing that now we have options regarding to the RDA 1 or other things versus that all going to the ACES. And hopefully things start looking upward and we have the option to do that. And overall, I just think it's, it's something that's better than originally happened in November. And, and better than what was there previously before the November action. So again, thanks, Neoma.
Ms. Shivi?
So I just want to get this straight. So are you leaving, Mr. Katsov?
No.
And if you're not, then why won't you put in there that you will pay back the general fund if you don't leave?
I'm really not going to get up and
She answered that.
Okay. Just checking.
Any other, Ms. Brackus, you have anything? Any other comments?
It's okay. You don't, you don't have to like me. It's all right. It's okay. You don't, you don't have to like me. It's all right.
I like everybody.
All right, any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. I just want to make sure, because there's been so much discussion, that the motion related to all agreements under E22, I just didn't want anything to go, kind of slip through the cracks there, and I wanted that on the record because there's just been so much discussion.
That is true. That's, that is what the motion was.
I have a motion in a second. Because of this, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote. So if you'll call for the vote.
No.
No. Breckus?
No.
Zadra?
One to five years, yea.
Delgado?
Yea.
Wait a minute, we need a, we need a vote on that last one, because this motion is not a one-to-five-year deal, so it needs to be a yes or a no.
But we have clarification from the attorney that we have the opportunity every year to reconsider this vote.
Absolutely. It's in the contract. But you don't vote, that's not the motion, is it, Madam, Mad- Attorney?
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. The motion was to approve the agreements as they exist with the terms and conditions set forth therein.
That's right. In the contract, it has in there, you get to approve it every year. So the motion is-
Because of that condition, it is a yea, Mr. Mayor. Because of that condition and only that condition.
Repeat that one more time, please.
Because the condition exists that we will be able to reconsider this every year, it is a yea vote.
Okay.
Because of that condition alone.
Okay. So have a yes there. Go ahead, Madam Secretary.
Delgado?
Yea.
Dorch?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Cachal?
Yes.
Motion passes, 5-2.
Show the vote, 5-2. All right. Now, yes, sir?
I would just like to thank you all, on behalf of Herb Simon, my son Stuart and I. Even though this seems contentious at times, I know how difficult this has been for all of you. It's been extremely difficult for us. But the end result is that baseball will stay in Reno and everyone will enjoy it as they have. So thank you very much.
Thank you. My attorney, that takes care of item 2-1.
There are other items under E2 we need separate votes on, Mr. Mayor. We have two resolutions.
All right, let's, yeah. Go to get those out of the way. Yeah. Get those out of the way. Item 2-1.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney. This is just a motion to accept this, accept the staff recommendation.
Okay. Ms. Jordan?
Motion to accept staff recommendation.
Mr. Dorch? Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. 2-2?
2-3.
Yeah, we did 2-2. 2-3.
Is resolution number 216, resolution of the redevelopment agency of the city of Reno authorizing the chairman of the agency to execute a settlement and restructuring agreement, Reno ACES Stadium, and authorizing the executive director and members, officers and agents of the agency to administer the agency's obligations, responsibilities and duties to perform under the agreement.
Mr. Dorch, motion?
Second.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no.
No.
Show the vote. 6-1? Huh? Oh. Who? Hillary, 6-2. Show the votes.
5-2.
5-2. Hell, I added another-
You just added another person.
Added another counter.
I don't get it.
5-2. All in favor now for the next motion. Item 2-4?
Yes, sir. Resolution number 6841, resolution of the city council of the city of Reno authorizing the mayor to execute a settlement and restructuring agreement, Reno ACES Stadium, a payment agreement for Reno ACES Stadium, a limited guarantee for the Reno ACES Stadium, and authorizing the city manager and members, officers and agents of the city to administer the city obligations, responsibilities and duties to perform under the agreements.
Okay, motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no.
No.
Motion, show the motion, 5-2. I keep wanting to go 6-2. Item F, identification for future agenda items.
Mr. Mayor, in light of, you know, this big issue that we just grappled with, which I think poses larger questions to this body, and I'm talking about the redevelopment agency, in light of, you know, the debt portfolio, the majority of which that we're struggling with is of the redevelopment agency, in light of the transfer of the post office, which was really the last partnership we dealt with, where, you know, we didn't, we didn't have any money in that. We had a special privilege and it was passed through for redevelopment. We don't have a lot of tools at our disposal to do redevelopment. That's part of why we structured this deal the way we, we had to. We can't go to the bond markets any longer. It's a new day. TIF is not kicking off. California's gotten rid of redevelopment agencies in general. It's being seen over there as a tool of the past. I think we need to have a workshop and specific discussions about the future of this body and this agency. I think, you know, I don't, we, we lost our last staff member. I don't know what's going on with that position. I don't know, you know, status on that. I think we need to give the public an opportunity. There's a lot of history. People know about what redevelopment has done, maybe have some vision for the future. So I'd like to call for a workshop on the future of our redevelopment agency in the second quarter of this year to think very seriously about where we're going. I think it's something that we need to do outside of the council priority sessions because I do believe that it is a separate function of our city governance.
The agenda items you want to put on for future consideration? Okay, yes.
Ooh, I can't remember. Does that come, come up in what, for the technology and innovation?
Yeah, that'll be-
Yeah, it's, okay.
You don't need to do any of that.
Oh, okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any other items? My favorite one, public comments? Any public comment? CNN, oop, I have a motion, my favorite motion. Wait a minute.
Wait, hold up.
I've got one public comment. Jenny Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mine is just, um-
Pull the mic down, identify yourself for the record.
Jenny Martinez, I was just responding for the acceptance to NAB Neighborhood Advisory Board, Ward 1. I have come to love Reno, Carson City and all the surrounding areas, and it's my home now. And I love and care about the people, and it's an honor to be of service to Councilwoman Sharon Zadra in the city of Reno. I'm proud to serve as her constituent and do my very best in the, in representing her and NAB Ward 2. And always care and keep in mind and heed public safety, art and culture, senior and youth services as well as economic development. I'm very proud to be a part of the long history and impact NABS have made in our community. And as a personal note, I go Reno ACES. I raise three boys here in Reno, and two are in college, one, excuse me, one are in college and two go to Reno High School. And it's a privilege to be a part of a baseball mom. My sons work hard. There's a number of all-star baseball teams and kids and families that support Reno and the surrounding areas. And also being on the committee for the Nevada Development Authority and member of the EDON, I just want to say on behalf of Sharon Zadra that there are a number of, just have faith in our community and the growth of Nevada and the people and the companies that work and help and then are part of the Nevada Development Authority and our senators and EDON, that they're working on bringing more tech companies and businesses to our area. And I promise you that Nevada will overcome these last six and seven years, and so will the people. And I believe in the council and, and the economic growth of Nevada.
Thank you very much. All right, we have any other? We have any other public comment cards? Having none, I have a motion in a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. This motion, this meeting's an adjournment. We're in recess right now of the Reno City Council. We're going to take about a 10-minute break and we'll come back into session.
Given no correspondence was received?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. This by law requires a presentation, so-
Well, then let's have a presentation, I guess.
What's the law, excuse me, what's, what, what law? Are we talking RMC or NRS that requires this presentation?
NRS, council member.
Thank you.
Was that, was that referencing the staff report, the NR, the specific NRS?
I think it's enough on, on the agenda.
Okay. All right. Thank you. What you have before you is a limited-term side letter of agreement between the city of Reno and the Reno Fire Department Administrators Association. And what it allows is for the fire chief to temporarily assign one of the current battalion chiefs to the training division chief position, which in turn leaves a vacancy in the battalion chief ranks. And then this letter would allow the fire chief to appoint an acting battalion chief from the battalion chief employment eligibility list to the position until April 13th of 2013. And this assignment of the acting position in the battalion chief rank allows for great on-the-job training for the fire captain involved as well as opportunity to prepare for promotion. And this will actually be a savings to the city. Could we have an overhead? Thanks. The one shift cost for an acting battalion chief is $246 roughly, but for having a battalion chief, a current battalion chief working overtime, the cost escalates to around $1,365. So by appointing an acting battalion chief, it would really save the city almost $28,000.
One of you want to, do you want to take over, Mr. Mayor?
Not really.
I have, I have a question.
All right.
Okay, so, and I'm trying to get my, I, I read the battalion chief bargaining agreement, and I, I have a question. So we need this because someone's going to retire a battalion chief.
That's correct.
And so we can go into the captain ranks and let one of them, you know, do this. But do we have to fill the battalion spot? I mean, because with deconsolidation, you know, some of our areas reduce, some of our calls have reduced.
We still need to have two battalion chiefs on each shift, and perhaps the fire chief can answer this.
But our, our calls have it reduced in this area.
Okay.
I mean, because of the split. Washoe County takes care of this, we take care of ours. And, but they haven't split, or if they're down chief, you got to answer.
For the record, my name is Reno Fire Chief, Madam Breckus. Prior to consolidation, we operated a, a two battalion chief system. It is a, a point of, it is one of their points in, in the RFDA labor contract that there will be two, correction, two battalion chiefs on duty. And the, the entire intent of the side letter is to enable me, the fire chief, to bring up a captain to mentor into the battalion chief's position while I take that battalion chief, and he mentors the division chief who is going to retire, so that we have a seamless transition and responsibilities. And, and that is, in essence, the crux of the side letter, so.
And, and then the 25 shifts is, why, where do you come up with 20, it's 25, well, I guess, weeks, days, or?
No, ma'am. The, the reason we came up with that number is this is a limited-term side letter of agreement. It may be, I may elect to, to fill that position sooner, once the vacancy occurs. However, this is the maximum amount of, of time that I will be allowed to reach down and grab a captain and place him into the battalion chief's rank. So hence the, hence the limited-term side letter. It, this is not in perpetuity. This won't set a past practice or a standard practice moving forward. It just allows me the opportunity to mentor and move someone up into that capacity of a battalion chief and thereby save, if I were to go the, the entire term, it would save 27 eight.
So the, and the 10 personnel who are on the SAFER grant that expires in June of this year, is there 10? Are any of them captains or battalion chiefs?
No, ma'am.
They're all firefighters?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And how about-
Kind of threw me for a loop there.
Yeah. But the, but the next grant where we have the other grant, are any battalion chiefs or captains-
No, ma'am.
-SAFER grant funded? Everyone's down on the fight lines.
Correct. Those are the lower ranking positions. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then another question about the side, the amending procedure for the collective bargaining agreement. It says that all side letters and side agreements entered into prior to the ratification of this agreement and not incorporated herein shall be obsolete and nullified. And this one is a little odd in that it just is a short-term duration. But I guess we're within our legal rights to have a short-term duration side letter?
Yes, we are.
Okay. And then the copy of the bargaining agreement that I was given by your office had, had just one side agreement, which actually predated the signing of this agreement. Are there other side letters? Is there, is there an index of all the side letters for this group that I can refer to and see?
We don't have one currently, but we can certainly prepare one for you.
Okay. Have we done a lot, because we just signed this in 2010. How, how many amendments have we done, do you know?
The reason you got the one in 2010 was because it demonstrated the concessions that each of the bargaining groups received, including, or gave back and, including the RFDA. We did have one other side letter that the prior council passed in November of 2012 that was very similar to this one, a limited-term agreement to allow for the fire chief to appoint an acting battalion chief and an acting fire marshal until April 13th, 2013.
Okay, okay. But then this, okay, I understand. Any other questions?
Madam Vice Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. For Councilmember Breckus, it's NRS 288.153. It is noted in the agenda title and in the staff report, so you will have those handy. And it basically indicates any new, extended or modified collective bargaining agreement or similar agreement between the local government employer and the employee organization must be approved by the governing body of the local government at a public hearing. It also indicates that the chief executive officer of the local government shall report to the local government the fiscal impact of the agreement. So that's why a presentation is needed. So you are provided the fiscal impact of the side letter.
Any other questions? Motion? We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Item F2, the McCarran Crossing?
Yes, if I can wait on that.
This is bill number 6841, ordinance to amend Title 18, Chapter 18.08 of the Reno Municipal Code entitled zoning, rezoning a plus or minus 14.03 acre site within a cooperative plant, planning area and is located along the east side of South McCarran Boulevard, plus or minus 275 feet north of its intersection with Pembroke Drive from plus or minus 3.79 acres of UT 40, unincorporated transition, 40 acres, and plus or minus 10.24 acres of OS, open space, to PUD, Planned Unit Development, McCarran Crossing, in order to allow for development of a mini storage facility and commercial and office spaces within the site's specific standards in two phases of development, together with other matters properly relating thereto.
Councilman Delgado?
My understanding is the applicant from the McCarran Crossing PUD agreed to continue their item to participate in the neighborhood planning process for the land east of McCarran Boulevard. I commend the property owner, Bill Manke, for his willingness to work with the city, even though he is currently in our development process. I also understand that- I also understand that his participation is based on all parties coming to the table. Our request under L1 today for the neighborhood plan item to come back on March 13th, 2000, this year, for the council, council agenda.
Madam Vice Chair, before you do that, if you could open the public hearing.
That's what you're saying. We'll open the public hearing. Madam, secretary of all notice has been sent.
Yes. Proper notice was given and no correspondence was received.
Thank you. Okay. So, no, no, that's fine. So is, was that in the form of a motion?
Yes.
For contin-
Sorry. Yes, if we can continue that to Mark until further notice, once we've done the remaster plan on March 13th on the agenda.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second, all in favor.
Hold on one moment. Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. Just so council is aware, if you do not pick a date certain, it will have, the cost of re-noticing would have to occur. And, and that's fine. I just want you to be aware of that.
Thank you. I am aware of that.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. F3, the moratorium on billboards. Madam Secretary?
Proper notice was given and no correspondence was received.
Thank you, Marilyn.
Marilyn Craig, Deputy City Attorney. This particular agenda item is a follow-up on the council's initiation of a moratorium on the conversion of banking, banked and current billboards into digital billboards until such time as the two lawsuits attacking or challenging that particular ordinance are resolved. So I'm available for questions, and if you have any.
So the moratorium does not have an expiration date attached to it?
It, it is, it is for one year, and then it can be renewed by resolution, so that we don't need to go through this elongated process if necessary.
What's the outer edge of an acceptable time for a moratorium in your understanding of this nature?
Well, it's all reasonable. I've seen it continued for five years in other cases, where they've had a similar situation like this, where they were considering lawsuits and so forth that were involving in a, an ordinance. So it's a reasonableness, and it's in the good judgment of the council.
Any other questions?
Okay. The mayor, then I need to read this. It's bill number 6841, an ordinance to amend Reno Municipal Code Title 18, Annexation of Land Development, Chapter 18.16, signs to add a new section 18.16.1500, moratorium on conversion of static billboards to digital billboards and other matters properly relating thereto. And the motion is a motion to refer.
Move to, motion for referral?
Second.
And a second, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item F4, Madam Secretary?
Proper notice was given and no correspondence was received.
This is bill number 6842, an ordinance to amend Reno Municipal Code Title 18, Annexation of Land Development, Chapter 18.24, Rules of Measurement and Definition, Section 18.24.203.4576, Subsection 23, Off-Premises Advertising Display, to delete the following sentence: "Any display which is composed of at least 80% of on-premises display is an off-premises sign and other matters properly relating thereto."
Motion?
Second.
A motion and a second for referral. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I'm sure I'm hearing that. F5, the Charlins PUD?
This is-
Madam Secretary?
And for the record, proper notice was given. We received one letter in opposition from Jeannie Harris.
And this is bill number 6843, an ordinance to amend Title 18, Chapter 18.08 of the Reno Municipal Code entitled zoning, Section 18.08.102, capital B, point 1293, to change the text in the PUD Design Standards Handbook to allow the urgent care medical facility used to operate between the hours of 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM, 24 hours, at Charlins Avenue adjacent, you know, add sidewalk to the street section of the north side of Charlins Avenue adjacent to the Planning Unit 9, and allow additional freestanding signs on 2.13 acres located along the north side of Charlins Avenue between Ambassador Drive to the west and Robb Drive to the east. The entire 123.2 acre PUD is bounded by Mayan Avenue to the west, I-80 to the south, and extends 1,275 feet east of the Robb Drive, I-80 intersection in the PUD Plan Unit Development Charlins Zone, together with other matters properly relating thereto.
Move to refer. Motion for referral?
Second.
With a second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. F5?
Six.
Oh, excuse me, six.
Of all?
South Meadows PUD?
It's-
Madam Secretary?
For the record, proper notice was given, no correspondence was received.
Okay. This is bill number 6844, an ordinance to amend Title 18, Chapter 18.08 of the Reno Municipal Code entitled zoning, Section 18.08.102, capital B, 1.1295, to change the text in the PUD Development Design Standards to amend the zoning from MF21 multifamily, 21 acres, to PUD Plan Unit Development on 1 acre, and amend the South Meadows Phase 3 PUD to add 1 acre to the Planning Unit L. The 1 acre site is located on the north side of South Meadows Parkway, 675 feet east of its intersection with W, Double R Boulevard, in a PUD Plan Unit Development Zone, which would become a part of the 669 acre South Meadows Freight, Phase 3 PUD located in the area bound by Double, Double R Boulevard and US 395 to the west, Demani Ranch Parkway to the south, and the Demani Ranch and Bella Vista PUDs to the east, together with other matters properly relating thereto.
I motion to refer.
Motion and a-
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. F7, Mayberry Salon and Barbers. Madam Secretary?
Proper notice was given and no correspondence was received.
So this is bill number 6845, an ordinance to amend Title 18, Chapter 18.08 of the Reno Municipal Code entitled zoning, rezoning a .59 acre site located 170 feet west and 280 feet south of the intersection of Mayberry Drive and Hunter Lake Drive at 1460, Mayberry Drive and 1165 Hunter Lake Drive, from MF14 multifamily, 14 units per acre, to NC Neighborhood Commercial on two parcels, together with other matters properly relating thereto.
Move to refer. Motion and a-
Second.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. F8, Madam Secretary?
And once again, proper notice was given, no correspondence was received.
And this is bill number 6846, which is an ordinance to amend Title 18, Chapter 18.08 of the Reno Municipal Code entitled zoning, rezoning a 48.8 acre site located south of the Interstate 80 eastbound off-ramp in the special planning area, McQueen Neighborhood Plans, general commercial land use designation from LLR1, Large Lot Residential, 1 acre Zone, to CC, Community Commercial Zone, together with other matters properly relating thereto.
I have a question for staff. Okay. Hi, Mr. Gilbert. The, this property, would it be eligible for a billboard, either digital or not, as a result of the ordinance that was passed, that is now being litigated, that now is in a moratorium period with us? I know there's a lot of, you know, steps that have been made to separate that decision, but I guess, looking at this property and knowing that ordinance that was passed, what's the use on this property?
Claudia Hansen, Planning and Engineering Manager. I believe, and I'll have Mike Greeley step up if, if he needs to correct me, but I believe when this came through earlier, they did a deed restriction on the property to not allow billboards. And he's agreeing with me on that one. So the last time this came forward, in the previous council, they agreed to put a deed restriction on the property.
Have you all read that, or has the attorneys read it, or anything along those lines?
I have not, I have not seen it. No.
Okay. Well, if we could get a copy?
Sure.
Is this an introduction, or?
Yes.
Yeah?
Okay.
Okay. That's great. Thanks. Any other questions? A motion, please?
All motion.
Move for referral?
Second.
And a second, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. F9, we have public comment. John Quintana? John?
We need to, Madam Mayor, we need to open the public hearing.
Madam Secretary, have all notice has been sent?
Yes. For the record, proper notice was given and no correspondence was received.
My name is John Quintana, and I live at 1298 Oliver Avenue. And I'm questioning why you're deciding to change the, uh, from a, uh, commercial to a residential situation.
Let's get staff up.
Sure. I mean, is, how long's it been, uh, commercial?
Mr. Quintana, do you have any other questions? And, and we'll address that. Do you have any other comments?
Yes, I do have some other comments. As a matter of fact, uh, this has nothing to do with that part of it, but incidentally, when the Nevada Energy was putting in the, installing their new, uh, smart meters, as they call them, they turned off the gases. One fellow came in, and the first thing, he says, "You got a leak in your water heater." Well, I'll tell you, my nose, my eyes, and my hearing is excellent.
And that may be another-
Okay.
Yeah. No, no, no. But you have an issue that we could help you with, that isn't, that doesn't relate to this particular agenda item.
It doesn't relate to the neighborhood. As a matter of fact, here's what I was gonna say. Whether they're selecting seniors to, oh, and here's the thing, uh, they did that two or three times. The last time that they came in, they actually broke the little dial, the control on the setting of the water heater.
Before you leave, someone from staff will get with you about those issues.
And on top of that, uh, they went on, there was three of them come in the last time, and one of them says, uh, "We can't drain it. We can't," and, uh-
And, and I understand what you're describing, sir. I do, I do, exactly. I understand what you're describing, but it just doesn't relate to this agenda topic. However, before you leave, we'll get with you and at least refer you, so that you can get some answers.
I'm not gonna be able to wait till your meeting's over.
No, no, no. As soon, as soon as we're finished here, they'll, they'll, they'll connect with you. The man behind you with the red tie?
Here's the thing.
He'll get with you.
And like I say, whether, it was a case of my, being a senior, which I don't know if any of the seniors have had that kind of situation happen, but, or whether, it may be even because I'm Latin, I don't know. But whatever the reason for it, that do happening.
And again, it's just that what you're describing doesn't relate to this particular agenda item. That doesn't say you don't have an issue. There's a gentleman standing by the pillar behind you. Do you see him?
And, well-
He will talk with you about these issues.
Well, here's what I was gonna, another thing I was gonna throw at you. You ought, instead of all the little deals that, which you're dealing with here, taking into consideration, as a matter of fact, my wife died at Renown, and the conditions there are disgusting. And then I was admitted two years, a little bit, and two years ago over to St. Mary's. And in the week that I was there, I went from 150 pounds up to 175. And a week after I was out of the hospital, I was down to 140 pounds.
Mr. Quintana, I'm sorry to hear that. The two gentlemen standing over your shoulder can be of assistance for you, but your time has, has expired for this topic. And they'll help you with the other issues that you were just describing to us.
Well, like I said, you have my phone number, so-
And we do. The gentleman right here will help you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Um, Madam Mayor, I need, I need to read this one, which is sick, bill number 6847, an ordinance to amend Title 18, Chapter 18.08 of the Reno Municipal Code entitled zoning, rezoning a .82 acres on the northeast, north, northwest, and northwest, southwest corners of the intersection of Oliver Avenue and Montello Street from NC Neighborhood Commercial Zone to SF6, single-family residential, 6,000 square feet, together with other matters properly relating thereto.
Motion, please?
Motion to refer?
Um, I have questions. This is the Oliver Montello property. Who's the applicant in this? Nate Pro-
I'm Jody Royal-Goodwin, Housing and Neighborhood Development Administrator. For the record, the City of Reno is the applicant in this case.
Okay. The city owns this property?
Yes.
What, um, how long have we owned these properties?
Since 2006.
What do we, what funds did we use to purchase these with?
CDBG.
Community Development Block Grants. At the time, what was the intent to use these properties for? Why did we acquire these?
Okay, so, in 2000, in late 2005, 2006, the City of Reno undertook a neighborhood revitalization project program in the area, which included some park improvements and that type of stuff. At that time, the neighborhood brought to us that these particular properties were facilitating some illicit behaviors. The police reported the same thing, that individuals engaged in illicit behavior would be on the corner, and then when the police would come, they'd go into the businesses and be able to, you know, escape per, arrest, questioning, whatever. Anyways, so at that time, we, staff was directed to look at ways to actually address that issue. Even back then, money is an issue. So we were directed to use CDBG, to ask if there was a way to use the Community Development Block Grant Funds to acquire the properties. And obviously, when we acquire them with CDBG, we need to have an eligible use on the back end. So we actually proposed to HUD and were approved under the theory that we, under the idea that we would actually acquire the properties, including the, um, the businesses that were located on them? Relocate the businesses, and then demo the businesses and construct, at that point in time, we were talking about for-sale affordable housing. The market was a little warm back then. So we proceeded with that, and then after we acquired the properties, the neighborhood told us they did not want the affordable housing. So they would, and they asked for a, a community center, that's what they really wanted. So we did actually work with, and I, and Lonnie brought it up earlier today, that we worked with Big Brothers Big Sisters on the idea of building their new facility there. At the time, we went, for about a year, we worked with them on that process. Unfortunately, the building they needed was just too large of a structure to fit on the small parcels that we owned, because they didn't want multiples, they wanted it to be one building. So that moved on. And then we were actually approached by Community Services Agency, who was interested in building a smaller community center with multiple services in it, and would have meeting space for the, for the community to use. That was, so that was in late 2007, early 2008. And in mid-2008, we allocated $400,000 in addition to committing the property to the project, so that they could leverage private resources. And we've continued to work with them up until December even, trying to get that project going. They had, they first had financing, and then they were, that kind of fell out when the economy crashed. And then they looked at private foundation money, and that wasn't working. And in the meantime, we'd been working, I mean, every opportunity I had, because I knew, because the one thing that's not okay under CDBG is land banking, and that's what we're doing. So I had been working with developers, whoever came said, "We're looking to do a project." I was like, "Well, I have these pieces of land." So, and that had not gotten us anywhere. And then last, late last year, HUD actually called us and said, "You have this project in the system that they track our projects in," and said, "You bought these in 2006. What are you doing? Where are you at? You haven't completed them." And said, "We need to move forward." So that's why we're moving forward with the zoning at this time, is because we've kind of run out of options, and if we fail to have something coming out of the ground at the end of this program year, which is the same as our fiscal year, they will come and ask us for the money back.
What, um, what funds do you intend to use to build the prob, the, build this project with?
Neighborhood stabilization program funds. So in, I want to, I think it might have been you guys' first meeting, actually. You acted on a request, no, it was in November, a request to initiate the rezoning, one, and then to reallocate money between the CDBG and the NSP program. And so, because the other thing CDBG cannot be used for is construction of, new construction of housing. So we have another project that's going, the reconstruction of a property on Moran Street. So we reallocated CDBG money to offset the cost of that project, and reallocated NSP between three other projects, including this one for the construction.
But we can use NSP money to landbank.
We can use NSP money to landbank, but we've already acquired the properties.
Can't, can't pay ourselves back with the NSP?
No, that's strictly prohibited. We can't even pay ourselves a sewer bill.
What about NSP3 money for a non-residential?
What about NSP three money for a non-residential, um, project?
When they read, when they re, when they, um, did the, the regulation kind of bridge that made all three NSPs under one rule, they, all NSP funds have to be used for, for, for housing at this point.
So this still will be affordable housing then, subsidized housing? What's the low to mod you're looking at on this?
We're actually looking at below fifty, because we're looking at rental so we can control it. So we can control the maintenance of it over the long term, ensure that it's continued. And we're looking at a mo, kind of a model project so that we can look at how does different or any renewable energy affect the long-term viability of rental housing.
And then it goes into our housing portfolio? The city's portfolio?
We'll be doing an RFP for a property we don't own typically. So we'll be looking at a partner who will develop it in partnership with us and then either own or have another management entity that would be owning and operating it, that would have, again, an agreement with us to do that for at least a period of affordability.
You know, this is a tough one, because this corner, and I know there was activity and were problematic, but this was the business core of a traditional minority neighborhood. I remember there was a barber there that we helped relocate way back when. And, and I can see the concern that their neighborhood's getting backfilled, you know, from this use. I can also see in, in my ward, you know, we just for one dollar sold a huge pricey piece of property to the Boys and Girls Club, right? Right? And so, you know, I'm, I'm, this is raising some equity issues that they're, they're expressing. The NC, can we, we can still do housing in the existing NC zoning, can't we?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. You can do housing. You can, you can do multifamily housing in the NC. What you cannot do in the, in the NC is single-family housing. So that's where this zone request is coming from. To do, and the option to do a single-family detached, it requires the SF six designation.
Single-family detached? What are the lot sizes on these? They're big.
They're fairly large.
You know, I've walked around that neighborhood back when and, you know, the, those large lot size for a single family are almost a, um, a liability, because there's so much yard to maintain. You know, maybe we could keep the NC zoning and work with them and talk about what the products are gonna, going to be. You know, what's your spend down on the NSP three timeline?
Well, the money has to be one hundred percent spent before March of two thousand and fourteen. And we do not have, I do not believe we have enough money to do multiple units on each lot.
Multiple units on each lot?
Yes.
And if we don't use the NSP money, turn it back, you know, don't use it, we just own the property. Well, then we're in CDBG trouble, right?
If we do not proceed, if we do not have something coming out of the ground or come, or have the projects complete, if it were some other something, which I haven't figured out what that would be.
Yeah.
The, um, the problem is that by the end of this fiscal year, HUD will be coming back to us for one point five million dollars.
So has all this been explained to the?
It has. And what I've actually told Mr. Feimster was that we, because we will be doing an RFP process, we won't be under contract with anybody probably for forty-five to sixty days at the very least. We, if they came back to us with a project, no, that would meet the needs of the community more so, that was viable. We'd be more than happy to stop in our tracks and fix it. Because I, even, because the other piece is, even when we've talked with developers, if it's been a nonprofit that's looking at a community center, none of them have been looking at more than one site.
Yeah. Um, this is a tough pickle, you know? This is a tough pickle of some federal regs, some money, some plans we had that we did not follow through on to a community. And I, I'm concerned, but I, I think, you know, I feel that we need to support this at this point and continue dialogue with them and see where we go. But I'm, I'm, I'm very distressed that we get to this point of not having buy-in from a neighborhood that we've been trying to address.
Well, and I would just say for clarity, is that we have been very clear with the neighborhood through the task force process, that the city did not have the capacity or the, the ability or the desire to open up another community center blocks away from Northeast Community Center that we would own and operate. That this needed to be something that was more organic to the community and met their needs, which was not within the mission of the city. And they understood that. And I'll also say that while, while there's issue now, we haven't had communication from their side either to check, that have been actually pushing the project for other purposes at the same time.
Councilman Tagato?
Did you want to finish something, Councilwoman, Preckus?
Well, whose ward is this?
Mine.
Um, you know, I, I, I don't really have any other comments. I, I think that the course of action of, well, but then you're moving forward on an SF six and then your uses are gonna be tied up, we go in another direction. Is this just a refer, an introduction?
Yes.
Okay. Um, you know, I, I think we need to move forward today. I think, um, you know, because we're in a, a pickle. But I, I would, you know, hope that staff would continue to work with them. I'm willing to participate in conversations, you know, brainstorm too. But, uh, you know, I think we do need to move forward at this point in, in this way. And, and it'll come back in two weeks for the adoption? Okay. So I'll move to refer, or it's your voice.
Yeah, just a quick addition to that. I reached out to the Feimsters and then the other folks from the Northeast Reno. So to, uh, Monday, or I believe Tuesday, we'll be reaching out to get a little bit more information. So you guys know how to get ahold of me. So again, I'll move to refer and we'll hopefully work, be able to work some things out.
I, I just, I just have a question. Do we, did we answer the gentleman's questions and concerns? We did? Okay.
We have a motion.
Motion to refer.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item F ten, Madam Secretary.
Proper notice was given and we received six letters in opposition and five letters of concern regarding this issue.
This is bill number sixty-eight forty-eight, an ordinance to amend title eighteen, chapter eighteen point oh eight of the Reno municipal code entitled zoning, section eighteen point oh eight, one oh two, small b, point one two nine four, to change the text in the PUD development design standards to amend the zoning to modify the Sky Vista PUD planned unit development to allow for development of three hundred and thirty-eight single-family condominium units on a site that was previously identified for a school and that has since reverted to an open space land use designation within the PUD and to modify the PUD to reflect an increase in allowed residential units from one thousand nine hundred and forty-eight to two thousand two hundred and eighty-six and other matters property relating thereto located north of the intersection of Silver, Sky Parkway and Silver Desert Way in, in a PUD planned unit development zone to have other matters property relating thereto.
We have public comment on this item. Angela Fuse.
Good afternoon, Council. For the record, Angela Fuse was CFA representing the applicant. Because I represent the applicant, I would like to request more than my three minutes. I want to start by giving you all a little bit of history into this project. Back in nineteen ninety-four, the Sky Vista planned unit development was approved. And at that time, the project went before city council and eighty acres were agreed to be given to Washoe County, which is now part of the North Valleys Regional Park. Thirty-two acres was agreed to be given to the school district. The thirty-two acres is this property here. During that meeting, it was the last city council meeting of the approval. A question came up by one of the city council members as to what would happen to this thirty-two acres if the school district did not build a school? At that time, the developer hadn't even anticipated the school district not developing, so it never came up. Then the question came up, well, what would make sense here? Of course, it's hard to look into the future and say what development potential is gonna happen when we don't know what's gonna happen in ten years. So it was agreed that it would become open space. And I will say that was stated in, in the meeting minutes, and I think Nathan brought this up at caucus the other day, the director of the Community Development Department did say, for the record, the only guarantee you can give is that there is due process. There's no guarantee that piece of property will never be developed. So that being said, the project moved forward. Fast forward to two thousand six. At that time, the Washoe County School District still owned this property, but they no longer had a need to build two schools. So they approached the developer and said, we only intend to build one school. Would you like to do something with the other half? The developer put together a project. It was seventy-four duets, two-story on the southern half of the project. The project did not go forward, but a lot of good feedback came out of that process. One thing that he heard was that the adjacent neighbors do not want two stories blocking their views. Another thing they heard is they want to see a project as a whole for the entire thirty-two acres. At that time, the school district didn't know when or if they would ever build a school on the other portion of the site. So there were a lot of unknowns. They also wanted to make sure that they didn't have the backs of somebody else's property abutting their property. They wanted some perimeter landscaping, open space surrounding any future development. Fast forward again to two thousand twelve. It's now been thirteen years since the initial contract between the school district and the developer. And the initial contract said they had ten years to do something with this site. So thirteen years has passed. The school district has reverted this property back to the developer. That occurred in October of two thousand twelve. So at this point, you have a couple of options. One is you can make it public open space. Developer approached the Sky Vista Homeowners Association and asked them if they have any interest in maintaining this as public open space. They said no. They also submitted a letter that's been in your packet saying they have zero interest in maintaining this as public open space. They already have a hundred, a hundred and sixty-six acres of open space that they have trouble maintaining as is. We also approached the city of, the Reno Parks and Reg Department. The city has no interest in maintaining this as public open space. They have a twenty-five acre site, which is close to the North Valleys park down here, that they're actually gonna use for a future park site. So then the next option is private open space. There's really no such thing as private open space. The problem is this site has become a nuisance. The entire community has developed around this thirty-two acres. It's a donut hole. It's an attractive nuisance. There's been a lot of code enforcement issues. There's been dumping of household goods, refrigerators, cars, stoves. It's a nightmare. There's also been a lot of illegal activities. The kids like to go here and have parties and do illegal drugs and drink. That's been a problem. They found one dead body on this site as a result of a drug overdose. There's also a lot of people, adults and children, that take their bikes out here, their motorcycle bikes, and ride, and it's become a problem. It's also a liability. People use this site for target practice. Several neighbors adjacent to this property have had their windows shot at. Again, it's a huge liability. And it's not one that the Sky Vista Homeowners Association, the city of Reno, or the developer wants to take on. So in moving forward, the developer put together a proposal. And he incorporated all those comments that he heard from two thousand six, not wanting two stories, wanting to see a whole project developed, not just half a project, wanting to see wide perimeter landscaped areas, open space areas around the development. One thing that, again, that we heard from the homeowners association, they don't want any additional open space. So everything that's done with this site is privately maintained. The product that we put forward, again, is a result of discussions with neighbors, with the NAB, with the Planning Commission, elected and appointed officials. It's three hundred and thirty-eight units, all single-story. All the units are ADA compliant. All the units are either one or two bedrooms, meaning we're not competing with any of the surrounding neighborhood, which is between three and five bedroom units. This will be maintained as a private rental apartment project. And again, we, because we're part of the HOA, we have to contribute dues. So on an annual basis, the development will contribute few dues to the HOA. However, there's no additional expenses to the HOA, because it's all privately maintained. Some of the concerns we've heard just through the NAB meetings, and I'm sure we're gonna hear today, have to do with traffic. When you move into an area, you have an anticipation of what's gonna be around you. The people that moved into this area thought it was gonna be two schools. Let me tell you about traffic generated from two schools. On a school day morning, you're looking at about nine hundred vehicles driving through your neighborhood. That's pretty significant. What we're proposing is generating about a hundred and forty vehicles driving through the neighborhood. Significantly less. The other issue we've heard about is density. Some people feel this is too dense. This is ten units to the acre. A typical apartment project is much greater than ten units to the acre. Keep in mind that when you do a planned unit development, the purpose is not to have every little pod look exactly the same. If you did that, we'd have subdivision after subdivision of six thousand square foot lots. So the purpose is to provide flexibility in different housing products and different types. We've done that further down here, where we have the Sky Vista Commons. That's about fourteen units to the acre. And then we have duets down here, which is about nine units to the acre. Again, there's already a pre-existing precedence that's been set for this type of development within this handbook. The other issue we heard was crime. There's a concern that if you let renters and those people into your neighborhood, it's gonna contribute to crime. I just want to say that regardless of if you own or rent, you're gonna have issues. One thing that's good about this project is that it's completely fenced. We do have an opening. There's one way in and one way out. That's open, there's no gate there, and that is on video camera. So if there's any crime going on in the apartment project or anywhere around us, we'll have it on video. The other reason's open space. As I said, nothing is going to be required to be maintained by the HOA. It's all privately maintained. We have large, open space perimeter landscaped areas around the entire project. In the front, which is where the main road is, Silver Sky Parkway, we have about a sixty-foot buffer between the road and new development. And then all the way around it, the setbacks vary between twenty-five feet and fifty feet. So we have wide setback areas. We have a trail system that goes around the entire project. And again, we have fencing separating this project from all other development around us. The, the idea of rental units, let me bring that up as well. So when you buy a single-family home, it's your option to own it or to rent it. It's your option to maintain the property or not. You can mow your grass or you cannot. When you move into this community, you don't have that option. It's done for you. This is not a low-income development. If you look at housing prices and rental prices around the community, things are going up. We have one and two-bedroom units and the starting rate is about nine hundred dollars. That's kind of the going rate right now. If you look around to other communities for high-quality products, that's the going rate for an apartment. But that, again, enforces the idea that this is not a low-income community where people are gonna come in and trash the place. You're gonna move here, you're gonna pay a price, and you're gonna get what you want. It's one and two-bedroom, and we anticipate there's not gonna be families here. So again, we're not having a bunch of children here making noise, which is another concern that we heard. We envision there to be a lot of seniors, because it is ADA compliant. Somebody earlier today said they wanted a senior project. There's a lot of good things about this project, and I hope that you see that. It's a forty-million-dollar investment into a community. It's gonna benefit this entire community, one, because it's taking away a nuisance. This is a huge public nuisance, and it's a huge liability. I honestly can't tell you why nobody has started a fire out here, because with all the motorcycles and the kids out here starting bonfires, it's only a matter of time before this whole place goes up in flames and then we're gonna have a real problem on our hands. In terms of the benefit to the Sky Vista homeowners, again, we're contributing to the homeowners association. So those dues contribute to everybody within Sky Vista with no added expenses. I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fuse. We'll reserve the six and a half minutes that you have in your allotted time for questions following. Continuing with public comment, Ed Hawkins. Following Mr. Hawkins will be Ellen Packard.
For the record, Ed Hawkins, Ward Four, NAB Chair. We had our meeting on the twenty-eighth, just two days ago. And during the course of this meeting, fifteen people showed up to oppose the project, ten of which spoke. And we took in the, the notes into Lisa Mann's office, so those are available to you. I'm for the project. I am not opposed to the project. I'd like to put shovels in the dirt. We all talked about when we campaigned, we'd like to put people to work, and now's the chance to do that. This is one of those projects you get to actually help put people to work. We had RPD out there before we talked about the projects. And Lieutenant Keith Brown explained that crime was down in our area, something that's really amazing for our area. It's like saying the same thing for Sun Valley. Crime is down. There was a lady earlier, a lady earlier in general comments at the first of the session here that explained that our crime was up and that crime was taking place in her neighborhood. I have to go with Lieutenant Brown on this one. Anyway, the biggest complaint was density. I thought it would be traffic or light or noise during my first looksee at this project. It was going to have a dog park on the extreme north end where you see the point up there. I explained to the developer and Angie that that would probably require an S U P and, and later on, if somebody complained about it, you could pull that. So they moved that dog park in the center of the complex. I also questioned the ability for the fire trucks to get in there and service any unit in case there was a, a fire or catastrophic event. That's been taken care of. We discussed also the We discussed also the traffic problems, if there would have been a school in that area versus the three hundred and thirty-eight units. On the last time that we talked, we talked about the Pembroke area and the open space ten acres that were going to be going there. I'm opposed to using open space if we haven't done anything else with it, but in this case, nobody wants it other than the developer, Washoe County Schools, HOA, Reno Parks. I think it's time we go ahead and revert that open space into the zoning that they're requiring for this development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Ellen Packard. Following Ms. Packard will be Alan Gess.
My name is Ellen Packard, and I am a fourteen-year residential homeowner in the Sky Vista PUD. My husband and I bought the home in nineteen ninety-eight. In two thousand and five, it was appraised at twice its value that we bought it for. Currently, it's at fifteen thousand dollars less than we bought it for. In the last several years, I understand that, you know, the economic downturn, of course, has contributed to this, but the actual atmosphere of the neighborhood has changed. We have a lot of foreclosed homes that are bank-owned, aren't occupied. We have rental homes, many of which are neglected. Those of us who moved into the neighborhood when it was first established, we maintain our homes with pride of ownership. At the age we're at, we had a neighborhood feeling. We had families with children. We had that diversity of ages. It was very, very comfortable. With regard to the original proposal for this land that's in question about the two schools, that was explained to us in the master plan. We had our daughter and her family lived in the area. They have two of our grandchildren. They subsequently moved out. They were about a mile and a half from us, so we thought this would be a family, a way to keep together, too. And they moved to another part of the area because the schools are terribly overcrowded. If we add this number of rental units, there are going to be children there, and how these schools are going to absorb them now, I have no idea. So I feel we're losing a sense of community, a sense of safety. I have a friend who also lives on Cristaline Drive. She's a widow. Her house was burglarized, and she's one of several that I know of, but I do know this woman personally. I have great empathy for her, listen to her talk about her lack of feeling of security. The police, because of the decreased tax revenues, can't respond very quickly. Oftentimes, they don't respond. They say, write a report if it's just a property loss or what have you, not personal. My husband died four months ago unexpectedly, and I more than empathize with this woman now. I feel less safe if something happened. And we've lost young families because they wanted to get where the kids have better educational opportunities and less crowded, and I think it further will decrease the value of our properties because we can't attract young families because they know of the school situation. So the original, it was stated that the two schools, middle school, elementary school, were not built there because the school district didn't need them. We needed them years ago, and we need them now. I really ask you to vote no on this. This is not the time to do it. It's going to cause many more problems in the neighborhood. So I would wish you'd take our long-term resident considerations and think about it.
Next is Alan Gess. Alan Gess will be Francis Shiel.
Hello, Council. My name's Alan Gess. For the record, I'm a self-employed designer of high-voltage electrical equipment. I live in the Sky Vista community. My equipment is recognized by the state of Washington. I'm the vendor of choice. I've installed equipment from Seattle to San Diego, including the Reno airport. Most important thing that I do is make sure that in everything that we're working on, that it works perfectly with all other components that are involved in any plan. It's permanently installed. Once it's in place, once the power's turned on, it's on forever, and it has to work perfectly, every component. Bungalows at Sky Vista are a bad component. This project is not compatible or complementary in any way to the surrounding community or the long-term potential growth for Sky Vista, and Sky Vista is showing signs of growth. The proposed density of this complex is five times greater than the single-family homes to the east, three times greater than the homes to the north and the southeast, and with buildings facing private property as close as twenty-five feet in some locations. But I wanted to put this whole project to scale, just to give the council an opportunity to realize what, I mean, Angela does a great job presenting this as a very utopian-type environment. I wish I would have chosen baseball. Put these bungalows on the corner of a football field, and from the end zone to the sideline, the width of the buildings don't even make it to the first hash mark, about two-thirds of the way, but the length of the building goes all the way out to the fifty-six-yard line point, fifty-six yards down the field. But there are two sizes of buildings proposed for this project. The larger of the two is the same width, but from the same point, end to end, would reach down the football field eighty-one yards, eighty-one yards, almost a football field in length. There are fifty buildings proposed for this project on this thirty-two acres. Of that, seventy percent of the buildings are of this longer length, almost the length of a football field. This project is in no way compatible with our community. This applicant has reclaimed this parcel after it was dedicated for the school district, has taken a golden opportunity, a gift, and chosen the low road. This is high density, it's high turnover, it's high profit, it's low cost, it's multifamily housing in the middle of our residential community. If approved and once underway, there's no reversal, there's no easy fix, it's permanent. And as bad as it is, what is it going to be down the road? Five years, ten years, possibly under new ownership? How will it be maintained? We'll be living amidst these football-length buildings. Please oppose this project. It's not right for our community. It's not good for the health of our community.
Thank you, Mr. Gess. Francis Shiel. Following Ms. Shiel will be Christian Toyes.
Good afternoon. My name is Fran Shiele, and I have resided in Sky Vista since January of nineteen ninety-nine. I have watched it grow up. I like the way it's doing it, and I retired from the federal government and picked Reno and that area as my permanent residence. I wholeheartedly agree with the project. As all the facts have been presented to you, I have walked it, looked at it, even touched it, and I think that people are really concerned of what is happening on all this empty land. Empty land is not good. People want to be able to sit in your backyard and know there's not going to be some ATV out there where you can't even have a conversation, or somebody's going to fire a weapon. We don't want that. As far as traffic goes, I walk it when traffic is at its highest, and it's not that bad. And as far as living out there alone, I'm a widow. I feel safe. I really do. We don't have much police presence, but I know that I have good neighbors. I know that our whole HOA is well-looked after, and I feel very confident that this will be another project that will be like that. So I wholeheartedly support it. I think it will provide an entity and services to people that nowadays really need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Shiel is what you said, right? I got it wrong twice. I apologize. Christine, I know I got yours wrong, too. Following you will be Steve Hayden.
Good afternoon. My name is Kristen Toyes, and I am the Regional Vice President of Mayan Management Group, which is a third-party management company for multifamily housing in four states. We currently oversee approximately thirteen thousand units nationwide, and right now we're overseeing eight apartment communities in Reno Sparks comprised of twelve hundred units. We are currently overseeing the two hundred and eighty-two multifamily housing community under the developer Jay Witt, Sky Vista Commons. We've had a working relationship with Mr. Witt for over ten years. He's a credible, well-determined owner, developer, and he takes care of his products. He shows a pride of ownership, and that was a concern that was stated earlier, that what is this property going to be within five years or ten years? I would ask everybody to go out and see Sky Vista Commons, and you can see a fabulous example of that. We feel that this community would benefit the area of the North Valleys, or only because that it's a very unique product. We see this every day when we are in the field trying to lease or rent apartments to prospects who come in. We have a large interest base on single-family story apartments, open yards, attached garages, and we just don't have the product within Reno Sparks to offer a lot of renters. We feel that this is a unique product. It would cater to a higher demographic because of the rental rates that are positioned slightly higher, comparable to that of a homeowner, a home rental. As a management company, we screen the prospects and the renters that move into our apartment communities, not only for rental history, credit, criminal history, and also sex offender registry. So we pride ourselves in how we maintain our properties. Again, we are in very much favor of this community and support this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Steve Hayden, followed by Robert, I can't read that, Taveller.
Hi, I'm Steve Hayden, and I work for Creative Design Interiors, and we're a contract floor covering company. So what I see on this is a little spark of life. I've done work out in the stead area, and our work has been foreclosures and some rental property, but we haven't seen any new construction. The community is where we are doing work, where there's new construction. It's a positive influence to that community. This is a unique product in that I see that people don't want to necessarily live in a rental environment where there's people above or below your residents, and I think this is unique to the Reno area, and we don't have anything like it on the books that I've seen or bid on. And so, again, I'm pro this community for all the positive attributes that have been mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayden. Robert will be followed by Rich Limble.
My name's Robert Mueller. I represent Town and Country Electric. I'm the president of a company that's been in business in Reno for forty-nine years, and I've been working with Silverwing Development since two thousand and five, and I just want to compliment their integrity and their attention to detail that they do in their projects. I think they are an excellent developer, and they do a great job of property management. And I think to see a forty-million-dollar development in the stead area is to really be a tribute to the quality of the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mueller.
Good afternoon. I've lived in Sky Vista for the past eight years, and my property will be to the back of this new project, and I approve this project. Let me tell you why. This past summer, we heard gunshots. My roommate and I, we went downstairs, stood on our bench to look out, and a bullet came flying past his ear and hit our house. Two weeks later, there were children or kids talking in the back of my fence at one AM, smoking marijuana. I called the police. We've had nothing but motorcycles, ATVs all summer long. Now we've had the snow. There are cars getting stuck back there because they can't get out. It is a nuisance back there. Nobody understands when you're driving a motorcycle and the dust is flying all over your house. But my concern is that the gunshots back there, it's just getting out of hand. This is twice it's happened, and I've lived there eight years. So something has to be done with this property because somebody's going to get killed, or ATV or motorcycle's going to go through my fence, and then what do we have? Who do I sue? Do I sue the owner of the property? Do I look at my neighbor saying, you didn't want this project, but now I have somebody dead? Something has to be done, and all the ones that oppose it, they have no idea how bad it is unless you live directly behind this project. And I'll tell you something, if my roommate would have got killed, I would have made so much hell for everybody because this is allowed back there. Also, when the school district don't, they picked up refrigerators, stoves, mattresses. It's private property. They're trespassing. I don't use it, and I live right behind it. So please approve this project. I need something done before somebody does get killed. Thank you.
And will you identify yourself for the record, please?
Rich Limble.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have additional comments, forms, from people who do not wish to speak, including Eric Karns, who has concerns about the traffic, that the grid was not designed for this. There are islands and cul-de-sacs to prevent this type of traffic, and that it was set aside for the school district, and that's what should be built. Chad Karns is also opposed, that the road system surely won't handle the traffic, and that it reduces walking and bicycle areas. Denise, oh, boy. Allison, I'm going to guess, does not wish to speak. Bad project, the traffic, property value issues, diminished quality of life in general. And Michael Olson, again, does not wish to speak. Don't want this project. It will severely diminish the standards of living. The traffic and noise will not be acceptable. That is the end of public comment. Questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Oh, I didn't see it, but if you'll come forward, if we don't find it, we'll have you fill another one out, sir. No problem.
I'm Robert Pruitt. I live at Cristaline Court, Ninety-Nine Twenty-One. I'm totally opposed to this building and the bungalow Sky Vista being built on this development. It does not meet the criteria of this area. There is too many units per acre. The streets are too narrow, and you have only one entrance in and out. It should be less homes per acre, should be compatible to the existing homes in the area. Cannot understand how the fire department can sign off on this place, plans. A fire in this area could burn the complex completely to the ground and injure a number of people. Also, notice homeowners living in seven hundred and fifty feet of this. The whole area will greatly be affected by this project. We bought our home in two thousand, and have enjoyed living here in quite a neighborhood, and very little crime in this area. But the project, I am afraid, is going to change for the worse. Would the mayor and the city council like this project in their backyard? Also, traffic has increased about tenfold since Walmart was open. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, sir. Would you just touch points with the clerk? We'll make sure we've got your comment card. Ms. Fuse, is there anything that you would like to address with six and a half minutes? Of course, there will be questions from the council, but do you want any additional time of your six and a half?
Yeah, let me just bring up the traffic one more time. There was a traffic study that was done, and it talked about level of service. And as all of you know, level of service is based on congestion. It's a scale of A to F. F is failing. That's like gridlock. A is very little congestion. Right now, Silver Sky Parkway is operating at a level of service A. With the proposed project, we will continue to operate at a level of service A. Project Access will be at level of service A. So the idea that there's traffic concerns, I think, is really a non-issue. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll bring it, is there anyone else who would like to speak that has not yet filled out a form? You're welcome to come up. Okay. We'll close the public comment section and bring it back to the table. Questions? Ms. Breckus?
You know, I have a comment, and then I'll lead into my questions. I was up there this summer. I was up there this summer, and I think Sky Vista has evolved into just a wonderful community. I know when it came on, it was, you know, it was never a high-end community, but the quality of design, the maintenance, I know it's, you know, like everywhere has been hit by foreclosures, but I was so pleasantly just surprised to see how long-tenured residents are up there, and I just think it's really been a great community, and the developers to be commended for that. Having said that, I think there's a few points, and Ms. Fuse touched upon it, one of process and one of purpose. And that is the essence of this decision before us. It's not about the buildings, it's not about the traffic. It is really purpose and process. She mentioned the minutes of the adopting meeting, and at those minutes, and I have those minutes, and at that meeting, the developer said he would not, that he wanted the, he said, stated for the record, that he would agree not to use the 30 acres, three acres, should it revert back to him for additional density. And, you know, people can say what they can say at a public hearing. It's not, you know, fixed in law like a planned development is until it's adopted in the ordinance. But that was a representation. And with that representation, I see in the planned development that every person who bought was disclosed of the reverter clause to open space. And the planned development is something that the developer writes and the city signs off on. And, yeah, we were probably pretty sloppy in allowing, and it was one of early planned development that we did, but we were sloppy, the city, in allowing kind of this ambiguity of this property to evolve. It should have been reverted into the HOA or some provision for it. And so, you know, the city takes a little responsibility. However, you know, the point of when the school district had it, they were maintaining it. With owning property comes certain rights and certain obligations. And if this is reverted back to him, and as I think it should for a very long period of time, or he or his, whoever follows him in ownership, he has an obligation to maintain that property free as a nuisance, and I don't see that he's doing that. But more specific, the purpose of the planned development, and when you read planned developments, you have to go very closely with the Nevada revised statutes in addition to our RMC. And I'm just, I feel very uneasy, because we have findings related to this, about the process that we're engaged upon, because the Nevada revised, and it's reflected in the findings, but says, "The enforcement and modification of the provisions of the plan must be to further the mutual interest of the residents and owners of the PUD and of the public in the preservation of the integrity of the plan as finally approved. The enforcement and modification of provisions must be drawn also to ensure that modifications, if any, if any, in the plan will not impair the reasonable reliance of the residents and owners upon the provisions of the plan, result in changes that would adversely affect the public interest." There's furthermore in here, "Provisions of the plan shall run in favor of the residents of the PUD, but only to the extent expressly provided in the plan and in accordance with the terms of the plan. And to that extent, such provisions may be enforced by the residents acting individually or jointly." So there's so much reliance on the residents to the integrity of the plan, and to the fact that we even went this extra step of telling people when they closed, went to closing, that, you know, it's going to be open space if it doesn't go as a school. And I feel very uneasing. There's a finding that we have to meet, you know, it doesn't confer a private benefit on anyone. Well, this gentleman who has, you know, built out his project, and I don't know the equity interest, I'm just saying, you know, the developer, he's had what was planned, and now he wants more. And I find that finding very difficult to meet, that he is not getting a private benefit, nor that we are, if we make this decision to adopt this, that we have met the law of the rights of the residents to have a stability and reliance upon the plan as adopted. I think we're in very tenuous ground here. There's also another finding that we are meeting the procedures and policies of the Nevada revised statutes, and I don't see that. And so for me, this discussion stops at this point. Yeah, the city has a vacant property that is possibly being a nuisance, and the city has an obligation to work on that. So I am very uneasy moving any further in the discussion about the nature of the project, because I don't see that we are really allowed to make a change like this. I can go on about how other cities deal with planned developments, where they very rarely change them. But a change of this nature to this mature and built-out community is very problematic to me. And I'll, but I have a question. I have a further question. And question number one is, in the planned development, there's some, you know, staff makes a comment that it's not a private benefit because residential construction taxes are being paid. And I get that. I see it the cost of doing business, just like, you know, paying for the, you know, the electrician or whatever. But there's a credit rebate division back. Is that allowed by Nevada revised statutes to make a side deal on residential construction tax to the way that we have? I know it's been at issue, what, the credit program for impact fees, and I'm just wondering about the statutory authority to rebate someone the residential construction tax.
Fred, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of council, Fred Turner, Community Development Director. Under Nevada revised statute, under the benefit districts that are for the residential construction tax, there's a certain timeframe to use that money within a certain timeframe under NRS. And I want to recall that it's a couple of years, but I'm looking over at Legal to see if they may have something, and I'm not seeing any. But there's a criteria for that, for, to use it within that benefit district within a certain amount of time.
Just to follow up, 3.9, and I think this has been done for another parcel that came in, in a previous amendment to this plan. It said, "The developer of residential parcel D and Village 13, which is the subject site, shall be allowed to request a refund in the amount of 50% of the RCT, in which payment shall be contingent upon the determination of staff in the city attorney's office that it conforms with state statute and city ordinance." So this is just basically putting in what you're saying is allowed in state law anyway? Is that what I'm reading?
There are provisions that you can negotiate with the city regarding a refund of the RCT, collected funds for putting in public, or typically it's public, open space, parks, et cetera. You can request that. And because I haven't been with the city in a couple of years, I'm not familiar with what the current practices have been, but I know across the state that has occurred before.
Okay. I can understand that there's legality, you know, there's questions of, you know, if we don't put in a park, they can come back and get it at some point. You know, as a strengthening argument that we're not giving a private benefit, to then make a reasonable, you know, agreement to back out half of their taxes owed is, to me, even more evidence that a private benefit is being conferred, but it is, seems legally defensible. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Just to give you a little bit more history on that, the developer initially put in-
Identify yourself, please.
Oh, sorry. For the record, Angela Fuse, representing the applicant. The developer initially put in eight pocket parks and seven miles of open space. They also contributed a lump sum to the mayor's park, which is to the north. So they put in a lot of money and a lot of facilities that went towards open space. This was an agreement that was made as part of the PUD. Back in 2002, there was actually a lawsuit, and it's included in your packet. It's part of the handbook that confirms that the courts found in favor of the applicant. So it's gone to court, and it's been affirmed.
Okay. Not on the amendment issue, but on the, what, the payment of construction tax?
On the RCT, correct.
Okay. Okay. And, you know, I don't have any dispute in the quality, like I said, of the project. It's just at this point in time, I don't think we can legally do this.
Are there any other questions? Mr. George?
Discussion, if we're ready for it.
Discussion, please.
Yeah, and, you know, from my standpoint, I'm going to rely on my attorneys to tell me if we can legally do this or not, and I haven't heard that we can't. And I mean, we've amended PEDs several times over the 10 years that I've been here, so I'm not overly concerned about the legality of that. But I look at the project, and we have had problems out in this area, as you've heard from some of the residents, with code enforcement issues out there for years. And the developer had come with some ideas on a proposal project a year or so ago. Oh, my God. Okay, a year or so ago. And at that time, there were a lot of concerns about that, about that particular project, and I think they've addressed them in what they've put before us today. So I'm actually comfortable with where we're at and what they've done. I think they've done a great job of listening to the issues out there, and it brought together a much, a much more amenable project. So that's, those are my comments.
Any other additional comments?
I just wanted to comment that, in looking at this, I do find it to be a very unique product, one in which I think the demand for it, particularly at a senior level, I find that would be quite appealing. So I do have concerns with regards to the fire issues out there, and not access, but a fire starting on this open space, and the trash, and the crime, and the gentleman that spoke about having a shot by his ear. Alex Woodley had a study for us that, you know, he supports this project because of the issues that are happening on this land, and it's concave in the middle. So it's, I guess that's the right way to say it. It's hard to see what's going on in the middle, and as teenagers love to do, sometimes not such great things occur when they're just out of sight. So I have real concerns with regards to the exposure to the city of keeping this project, of not moving forward with this project. And I do find it to be a very unique product. I will say that the argument that renters don't, may not take pride in ownership, I actually take offense at that. I disagree with that wholeheartedly. I think people are renting these days for a variety of reasons, so I just wanted to go on record and say, I think this is a good project.
Any other comments? Mr. Delgado?
I had the opportunity to speak to two different residents out in the community, and they seemed in support. They were worried of the nuisances that were going out there and the different issues that were going on. Also got an opportunity to sit down with the developer and ask some questions in regards to parking, in regards to open space and land, and how that was going to be carried over, and I feel comfortable with the product that was presented. I thought they made some changes from the time of the planning commission up to now. And I see it's an opportunity to really take advantage of an area that's causing trouble not only to the community out there, but also to, for the city in general.
Thank you.
Was the organs read?
We did.
Tracy, sorry, this microphone's having troubles today. Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. Mr. Cadlec read it previously.
He did read, okay. I can remember. So I'll move to refer item F10, and I can make the findings.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries five to one. Item F11, Madam Secretary.
Proper notice was given, and we received two letters in opposition and two letters of concern.
Do you have any public comment?
No, everything was on 10. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this item? I don't have any forms, but you're certainly welcome to.
Thank you. For the record, Angela Fuse with CFA, representing the applicant. Again, this ties in with the zoning change. It's a tentative map for 338 units. I'm available if you have any questions.
I'll move to uphold the recommendation of the planning commission.
Have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Discussion?
Marilyn Craig, Deputy City Attorney. Should you desire to approve this tentative map, would you make it subject to the zoning map amendment being approved at its second reading, so that you don't find yourself in the awkward position of having approved a tentative map on a zoning change that doesn't occur?
I'll include that in my motion.
Good with the second? All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries five to one. F12, Madam Secretary.
For the record, proper notice was given and no correspondence was received.
Thank you.
For the record, John Flansburgh, Director of Public Works. Staff came, or has received direction from the council to look at this parcel and to negotiate for a price. We have done that. This parcel is located at Geiger Grade and Veterans Parkway. The land was acquired by the city from the RTC for a drainage project. That drainage project has been completed. So it, the, and in this sale, we would be retaining our rights for the easement for storm drain and fiber optic line. We are asking council to consider the appraisal that we have received as the fair market value. The as-is price for the appraisal, or for this parcel is $288,000. Staff has negotiated a value add, if you will, for the combining of this to the adjacent parcel of an additional $37,000 for a sale price of $325,000. And so if the council has any questions, be happy to answer those. And also, the, we have a representative for Lewis. Ted Erkan is here also to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions?
I brought up at caucus some questions about the utilization of the new provision of Nevada statute related to the disposal of properties for economic development purposes, which allows us to sell this property without going through a bid process. In review of that statute that we, the city, have not used in the past, and, you know, trying to figure out what the legislative intent is, I feel that this can meet that test. I just want to get that on record, that, you know, it's an untested area of law of dispositing properties, but I feel that we have the latitude, and the argument set forth meets that. There's an odd retroactivity nature to this statute that Knowles and Boyd's the property after a certain period of years, which kind of has some, you know, questions of process down the road. And I just would like the applicant to come up and state his understanding of that, and that he, you know, he knows that, you know, there's some risk for him going forward in his plans because of that provision.
For the record, Ted Erkan with Lewis Operating Corp. I'm familiar with the statute and that portion of 268, and the five-year provision, that if a sale were to be set aside, that any zoning or change in the ordinance relative to that property would also be set aside if it occurred within five years.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I do.
Madam? Ms. Sheehy, please.
It concerns me that we're not going out to bid for this. I'm afraid that, you know, people already have issues with transparency in government. And so this, for me, is a little bit of an issue. So can you kind of give us a little background on why you feel that this is okay? Not that I'm saying it's not, I just would like you to give me a little background on-
That would be, that would be John.
I don't, I don't know who-
Yeah, that would be John.
John?
Again, John Flansburgh. I feel this process has been very transparent. The developer had came to us, they were interested in this parcel. We looked at it. It is a, we do have maintenance that we would need to perform on the property in general. By selling the property, not only do we take it out of the public hands, we put it in the private hands, taxes are paid. That is a benefit to us as well. The negotiation, they're not paying just, we actually have the right through this statute to sell it below appraised value. We are not only selling it for appraised value, we're selling it for $37,000 above the appraised value. And that's, that's why we think it is good for the city. We think it is in our best interest to do this, and we believe that it is very transparent. It is, it is a better, this land is better combined with the adjacent property than it would be standalone.
Right. And so the other fear is, is that someone else comes in, buys it, and then they hold on to it.
Could be.
And then it ends up, you know?
I think that the developer is willing to pay the value-add price additional on this to have the certainty that they would receive it. I think that's, I think that's why we're getting the value add.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Comment. Mr. Delgado?
Yeah. Comment, I understand, like Councilwoman Sheehy, the concerns about how this is viewed out in the public, but my understanding also, the comfort is, this land is adjacent to the current applicant's land, so more so create a larger parcel to create a better development product at the end of the day versus- development product at the end of the day versus something that's just kind of an island sitting out somewhere else, and...
Correct. Again, for the record, Ted Erkan with Lewis Operating Corp. I think I can answer both questions. So, and I don't mean this to be comical. The city property, it has no access, it has no sewer, it has two giant five-foot storm drains that run down the center of it, it has overhead power lines that go over the north portion of it, which render the north portion of the site unusable, and it has the crane ditch that goes across the south side of it, which render it unusable. Hey, outside of that, it's a great three acres, okay? No access, no sewer, and all those other things. But, it is adjacent to a 4.8 acre piece that we have, and so, it has value to us. And so, quite frankly, you know, one might say we're way overpaying for this thing, but the value is indicative of the value to us. Quite frankly, we can pay the most because we can put it to use. If it went to, and if jobs can be created, a development can occur that wouldn't otherwise occur on this property. If it just kind of gets into somebody else's hands, quite frankly, with no access, with no sewer, you just got a dirt lot. And that's not accretive, that's not economic development for the city. Look at it today, look at it 10 years from now, it's not going to change, except for the weeds.
No, that's not our issue. The issue is to...
Well, I just, I just wanted to kind of, yeah, I just wanted to pay attention.
All right, I just want to make sure.
My understanding is the economic development approach is that this isn't something that's carried forward all the time. This is a special case-by-case kind of thing, and I think this clearly proves the point that this, this can work in this, in this application.
Any other comments? Mr. George. We have a motion and a second.
Marilyn Craig, Deputy City Attorney. You do need to establish a fair market value for the property because you don't have two appraisals before you, so the way the law reads in this case is you have one appraisal, and then it's up to council to establish a fair market value. The fair market value for this property was identified as 288,000, and then the, there was an additional amount paid by the adjacent landowner, or proposed to be paid by the adjacent landowner. So, if you would make that finding too, please.
I'll include that in the motion. 288,000?
Yes, please. And also, at some point, approve the resolution?
That's right.
Okay, good enough.
Yeah. Good with the second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. F-12.2.
Resolution number 7810. Resolution finding that it is in the best interest of the city of Reno to sell its real property, APN number 143-040-15, an approximate three-acre parcel located in the vicinity of Geiger Grade and Veterans Parkway, called, referred to as the Geiger Parcel, having a value in excess of $1,000 for economic development to Pioneer Parkway Holding Company, LLC, without first offering the parcel for sale to the public pursuant to NRS 268.063.
Move to adopt.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. F-12.3.
Move to accept staff's recommendation.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Ordinances. Ordinance adoption, G-1.
Ordinance number 6275. An ordinance creating the City of Reno, Nevada, 2013 Special Assessment District Number One, ordering the acquisition improvement of six street and one sidewalk projects consisting of 28 street segments within the City of Reno, Nevada, providing for the levy and collection of special assessments, therefore ratifying, approving, and confirming all action previously taken by the City Council of the City of Reno and the officers of said city directed toward the acquisition improvements of said projects in the district, prescribing details in connection therewith and other matters properly relating thereto.
Questions? Motion and a...
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item H, resolutions. None? So, we'll move on to ordinance introduction. None. The standard items, City Manager's Office Legislative Report, Cadence.
Good afternoon, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Klinger. Here before you today with your first report for the 2013 legislative session, and have 13 bills for your consideration today. Given the hour, I would certainly defer to the council if you wish for me to go through each of these individual bills. I'm happy to do that, but if there's certain bills that you'd like to pull out to discuss individually, or if perhaps the staff report contained enough information, if you just have specific questions, whatever the pleasure the council is.
Does the council have specific questions? What's the pleasure?
Is there anything you need, any direction on right away, Cadence?
There are, Councilman, there. Each of these items, we are requesting the council to give us a position on, and in particular, one of the city's bills, we are asking for your, to grant us the authority to make some amendments to those bills as necessary. We are seeing that these prefiled bills are getting hearings very quickly. We've actually already got agendas for committee meetings next Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, so these bills are coming up quickly, and we would hate to be requested to have a position and not have that feedback from the council. So, in the, the recommended motion would, would indicate the, the direction that we're seeking from you. And the bill that we're, we were seeking direction, the ability to amend is AB-9.
Right.
Anyone have questions on, on AB-9 in particular? We're taking just a moment to review this because we didn't have the document way ahead of schedule. Thank you.
So, AB-26, you're actually looking, you want some discussion on that one?
Yes, thank you, Councilman George. AB-26 is one that we had not, that staff did not feel was necessarily appropriate for staff to be taking a position on. That one is, is a bill of the League of Cities and Municipalities. It has to do with the statutory rate of depreciation applicable to improvements made on real property for the purpose of determining the taxable value of the property. It's really changing the method by which depreciation on, on real property takes place, and so, because certainly the, if the bill is successful, it would likely result in additional revenue to the city, but it is changing the method by which depreciation is applied, and we seek your, your policy direction on that. Thank you for pointing that out.
I can make a couple comments on this one. You know, this would be a big shift, okay? But, how much of a chance it has, that's another question, right? But, I am solidly behind it from my background. I've, I believe that the race for ratables, you know, the race for new suburban development has not been helpful to our long-term evolution of our jurisdiction, our regional form, and, you know, I was very surprised in the last month to sit with the builders and the realtors who are also see and in favor of this. So, I, I think it's a big win-win, and I live in an 80-year-old house, I'll just put that on record too. Fully depreciated. So, I would urge us to take a position of support on this and not get our hopes up too high.
Right, right. And I would agree. I think, and the input I've gotten from the community is that they want to see us, see if they can get it through.
That's what I've heard too.
So...
Goes for me as well.
And I, so on, based on that, that's the only other one that, that's the only one you had, that you didn't have, that you wanted some discussion from us on, right?
That's correct, thank you.
So, I'll, I'll go ahead and move to approve staff's recommendation with the addition of a position of support on AB-26. Does that take care of everything?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Wait, did we, I'm sorry, I stepped out, I had to. Did we deal with the charter situation, or do you want to deal with that again later?
Councilwoman, I did indicate to the members that we were seeking the amendments that are specified in the staff report, that there were two sections of the bill that we had requested the authority from the council to amend. One to amend, as was detailed, and the other to amend or potentially even delete if it raised significant concerns and was jeopardizing passage of the bill.
Okay, and they have to be in on Monday, right? All the changes, or?
No, ma'am. If we're presenting amendments to the bill, we present them at the time that the bill is heard.
Okay.
I did articulate to the, to the council that the prefiled bills are already being scheduled for hearings, and the concern that if we didn't address these bills today, the next opportunity to do so would be two weeks from now, and potentially the bills will, would have already been heard, and we would not be able to bring forth the council position.
Okay. I'm sorry to bring this up again, but there's a provision in there about the removal of a council member, and, and that would be new language, and I've expressed concern about that. You know, it's typical for a body to be able to censure or remove, you know, an individual, but usually those are larger bodies. They're bodies that maybe serve in a party basis, so there's kind of a checks and balance of checking, of protecting members, there's, there's multi-steps. I'm concerned that the threshold for removal of this body of one of us is for what's called a giving direction to a staff member. You know, I had my photo taken by Sharon and had to call her up and say, Sharon, I don't like my photo, can we retake? And that's direction. You know, I asked Lisa to bring me down my book. That's direction. I think it's a very broad threshold, and in a body this small, it would take just three people to remove one of us, and I don't think that's right to the voters, and I think it could, you know, put a fear of, of real, you know, you hate to see a body go down that road, but I think it's, it's very threatening, and, and I don't think it's something that we want charter powers. You know, the voters get every four years to take a look at us, and in a small body like this, I think it's jumping a little hard. So, I would recommend that we pull that provision out and not tell the legislature we want to put that power into this body.
I guess I would ask Andrew what his feelings are on a definition of direction.
I mean, I think a definition of direction, you know, asking someone to go get you a binder or, you know, retake your photo, I mean, I certainly wouldn't consider that direction. Asking staff to, to go out and take some action, that, that clearly is the purview of the manager, I mean, that's the sort of thing that this is intended to protect against. Asking staff to go out and spend more than two hours of staff time doing research or putting together a particular project, I mean, that's been identified in the council rules, that that has to come back to the council. So, those are the types of things that if you're talking about direction to staff, that, that I think that's the intent of it. It's not intended to say, you know, if you ask them to do, you know, some simple little thing that is, go get your binder. I think that's a little different.
And, and, I mean, the key to that is, is someone on this body going to go to that extreme, and if those are the rules, you're going to have to live by also. I mean, you know, I mean, it's, it's still going to be up to the elected body to make the determination, so I don't, I don't have a problem with it.
Cadence, is there any direction or interpretation that, that you have that hasn't been covered? I mean, do you see that the, there's coverage here for the, the kind of the nuances that Ms. Brekis described?
I do. I would, I would agree with Manager Klinger's statement, and I guess my only clarification would be, and Ms. Chase can help me with this if, if I'm not correct, but the, the section that Councilmember Brekis is referring to about removal is not creating an additional provision within the charter for removal, is simply referencing the existing language within the charter that speaks to the method of removal. It's removal from office in accordance with Section 3.150 of the charter itself, which is, which currently exists, or Chapter 283 of NRS as applicable. So, we're, we're not adding anything to the charter that isn't already there, we're simply specifying that, reaffirming that violation of this provision would be subject to those provisions that are within the charter already.
Madam Mayor, Tracy Chase Reno City Attorney's Office. The reference in addition to the NRS provision is a reference to a malfeasance or a misfeasance in office, and there is a whole process detailed in that chapter that would have to go through for, before removal. It is not a vote of three members of the council, so, so if you're, you're aware, it is a long process, and, and that has specific hearing requirements and everything else associated with it.
And Madam Vice Mayor, if I may, certainly if there is additional language that, that this body as a whole would like to request, staff is most open to that if, if that would address the concerns of Councilmember Brekis.
But what it does is it raises to the level of malfeasance, which is a pretty strong threshold, you know, directing staff, and I, I think that's a big jump.
I guess I'm not as uncomfortable with that, probably just because of the, the time that I've had here to experience what it means, and I, I'm not saying that that's easy for you to, to accept, but just have some confidence maybe that, I think what's, what's being talked about in here is, is not that simple kind of, of day-to-day operation that isn't beyond the, the scope, that we know the parameters. You know, if it's going to be more than a two-hour kind of a thing, you have to absolutely go through, through the manager, and...
Oh, I'm sorry.
And you become comfortable with, you know, a little 15-second task is okay, that's okay.
I've never heard any time, you know, hours, I mean, I've heard those mentioned by other staff, but I, I haven't, I, I just... It is a rule in the charter?
Councilmember, I believe those are in your council rules.
Okay, okay, okay.
Any further discussion? We have a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Cadence.
Thank you.
Good luck. Monday, Monday's the start, correct?
Monday it is, thank you.
So, we'll be seeing, we'll be seeing from you a lot. Sometimes you'll be in a hurry to get here. We appreciate that dedication.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to the K items, Public Boards and Commissions. Financial Advisory Board. No action there? Is there? Ward one, Ward one, NAB.
I'm sorry, on the Financial Advisory Board, there is a reappointment of Jason Norris.
Ms. Brekis? Do you want to take action? Or do you need to continue for interview purposes?
Yeah, I do. His, his resume was very brief.
It's a reappointment, yes.
It's a, oh, it was a reappointment. Okay, yeah, I'm, I'll make the motion.
For reappointment? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Ward one.
Ward one.
I'm sorry, that was Ward one? Thank you.
Ward two?
Sure. I would like to appoint for Ward two, Genevieve Martinez.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Ward two, South.
I would like to appoint James Pearson.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Ward four.
Yeah, I'd like to appoint, make the motion to appoint Louis Green.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Senior Advisory Board.
We have not decided at this time who we will be putting on the Senior Advisory Board.
Motion for continuation?
Continuance.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Historical Resources Commission.
Motion to make the appointment.
With a...
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. H, one H has been pulled. The reason for that is the inter-local agreement does not accommodate, and we'll be following through, as we talked in caucus, about potential revisions there. The Art Town Appointment? Ms. Sheevy?
I would like to... Oops, sorry. I'd like to appoint Oscar Delgado to the Art Town Board.
I accept.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Your work begins quickly.
Yes.
L-1. Future items for agendas. Mr. Delgado.
I'd like to put on, for L one, future remaster plan of the, what was it, the area that I had out there on January 16th, pulled that, I tabled that, and I want to bring it back for March 13th.
Okay, anything else? Any other items for future agendas?
Madam Chair, or Madam Mayor, last meeting, we entered into a contract with some labor relations folks to assist the Human Resources Department in the collective bargaining arena, and I know we have agreements that come due this year, and I know that, you know, the process is set up that we go into a lot of closed sessions related to that, and I'm just wondering for transparency purposes if we could have from the Human Resources Department, not at the next meeting, maybe at the next one after that, but some update on each of the bargaining group agreements, when they're due, you know, what's the process for all of this? And I understand that there were concessions made last budget cycle, or side agreements to the existing, and I kind of like the lay of the land on some of those from a budget, you know, I don't want to get into the budget because we have a process for that, but I want to understand, and I want the public to have an understanding of where we stand on our agreements with our groups.
Okay, is that clear? Staff has clarity, okay. Any other items for future, reports from conferences or professional meetings? Again, seeing none. Any discussion for licensing requirements?
Where are we at on that?
We're L four.
Hi, Christine, can you tell me where we're at on that? I haven't, it was sort of confusing as to the process and why it was, and, you know...
For the record, I'm Christine Fay, Resource Development and Cultural Affairs Manager. The discussion that Councilwoman Sheevy is referring to has to do with the idea that the Arts and Culture Commission is interested in finding a way to encourage artists to be out and about in our community more than they are right now. We do have a First Amendment artist in ordinance, which does state that they don't have to get a license under their First Amendment rights, but it does also have a provision that at some point there's a threshold that they do get a license, and so that is what the commission, I believe, spoke with their council liaison regarding, and staff has been working on this issue internally between legal and business license and arts and culture.
Okay, I would just ask that we could move forward so that they, the artists have a better chance to flourish and, you know, display their art outside, and it just seemed really unclear and confusing to these artists, and I think it's important because, you know, I think the arts culture to continue to flourish is going to need something to help them sort of move forward, and I know that they're very reluctant to the business process of having these businesses, or these business licenses. So whatever we can do to make it much more...
Yes, Michael Chomp, Business License Division, yeah, staff would, just looking for direction to move forward, that's, I think, the direction that you're giving us to work with the City Attorney's Office and the Arts and Culture Commission, maybe to bring something back, just review that section of the ordinance and make it a little bit easier, or whatever the desire of the Arts and Culture Commission would be.
Madam Mayor, if I might, and just sort of for council's edification, and this is one of those items, when we talk about where it will take staff more than two hours to do something, that's exactly what this item is for, is to give staff direction and get approval from the rest of the council for staff to spend more than two hours on an item, so that's exactly what this is.
Okay.
Craig Scott, City Attorney's Office. Right now, there's a provision that basically says if an artist earns about $60, but it doesn't say $60, it's sort of, there's the gobbledygook language that would make it much clearer, and they're talking about increasing that threshold amount to a higher amount. Legal does want to take a look at some First Amendment and equal protection type issues with respect to that, and I would recommend that an ordinance that is already in the drafting process be submitted to the Arts and Culture Commission for their comment, and then bring it back to this body if that would be an appropriate process.
What is the existing RMC we're talking about?
This is section, or chapter 5.14.
5.14, okay, thank you.
Yeah, and one of the things it does is it relates to sidewalks now and offers protection for people going down the sidewalks, so that somebody who is exhibiting art, selling art, street performer, doesn't block doorways or block the pedestrian traffic, and that's going to be expanded also to provide some limitations in parks also, because they're also a traditional public forum, that the artists can perform their, display their wares, make sales, but we also have city interests in making sure they don't, well, for instance, trample the grass or get in the way of different things, so some of those limitations are going to come in the ordinance also.
Okay, anything else? All right, we will have a public hearing tonight at 6 o'clock. There has been a request by multiple parties for a continuation of that item. We will open that public hearing tonight at 6 o'clock, and action will be taken at that time for continuance. So we'll be in recess until the hour of 6 o'clock. Thank you. It should be.
Yes.
Okay. The public hearing is now open. We have actually had a multiple, couple of requests to have this item continued, and Mr. Councilman Delgado, do you have?
Yes.
That's right. Madam Secretary, has proper notice been given?
Yes, for the record, proper notice was given. We received 23 letters in opposition to the project and two letters in support.
And again, we've received requests for this item to be continued, and we would ask, we've received multiple requests to speak, we would ask if this meeting is continued, that anyone who would not be able to attend the meeting on the date that it is continued to, if you are not able to attend that meeting, that we would absolutely hear from you this evening. If you can be, if you may, are available to attend the meeting at its continued date to hold your comments, so that we as the decision-making board can hear all information on the issue at one time and evaluate all information at one time. Councilman Delgado.
Do we leave it open for anyone to do that?
Well, do you want to make comment?
Well, this time, my hope is that we'd be able to continue this till March 27th, in the hopes that the new city council would be able to get their hands around this a little bit more to hear in further detail and to hear from other stakeholders around the community. So again, I refer to continue to March 27th.
Is there anyone who would not be available on the 27th who would wish to speak this evening? I don't see any hands, but I will ask again, anyone in attendance tonight who does wish to speak, who will not be available for a meeting on the 27th? Yes, ma'am, please identify yourself.
My name is Anna Lojala, I'm one of the appellants to the planning commission's recommendation, and what I would like to ask for the 27th is a possibility of having a larger site, because we anticipate many more people attending.
That's something that we can accommodate if the need is there, so as we get closer to it, if we have that expectation, we have done that in the past. We can accommodate larger groups in this building, not only here in the room, there's obviously a fire code here, but we've got a lot of area out in the front common area, we have screens out there, we put seats out there as well, so that you still can be in the location and still speak. You may not be sitting inside these doors, but you'd be sitting outside the other doors, so we take all of that into consideration. We absolutely try to accommodate and do accommodate the crowd expected.
Okay, and then I have one more request. I believe there are four or five appellants to this, to this recommendation, and last year we had a few of them. An appellant is given 15 minutes, and Merrickelle, last year, we had to share that 15 minutes, so we're each only given about three.
That's correct.
What I would like to ask is, none of us here want to be there all night, but this is a very complex issue, and we would like to ask for maybe another 10 minutes or so, that since there are so many and there are so many issues with this, that from the 15 minutes, maybe you can take it up to 25 or something, so we each have maybe five minutes each? We're just asking for another 10 minutes.
I understand what you're saying. Remember that in addition to your 15 minutes that you receive as an appellant, if you have one person speak to that, each of the rest of you get an additional three minutes as an individual speaker.
Okay, so how much time does each person have? Because I'm under the impression now that if there's five of us, we each only get three minutes to speak.
If that's how you divided it, yes, but we have had requests in the past, I can't remember how we've actually responded to them, quite frankly.
Karen Craig, Deputy City Attorney. Generally, you give an appellant 15 minutes each, and then any person who's not an appellant have three minutes to speak on their own. However, you have asked them that they not repeat...
Correct.
...whatever has been said before. So if there are five appellants, that's an hour and a quarter in and of itself, if everyone chose their entire 15 minutes. If they can cut it down because others have already made their comments, that would be helpful to the council so that they can understand them, but they are entitled to 15 minutes apiece.
So what does that mean? How many minutes do we have, each person?
Well, she just calculated it, it would be, correct.
Okay.
For the appellants.
Correct.
And of course, the applicant gets some additional time, too.
Okay, and I don't anticipate, my voice will be gone after seven minutes, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here tonight who would not be able to be in attendance on March 27th? And the applicant and the appellants are in agreement for a continuance to March 27th? And could, do we need that on the public record, or can we just say that we received a nod of...
It's my understanding that we have received a written waiver of time from the applicants that is required by state law, but it's also my understanding that the appellants have also, I believe, provided a written waiver.
Okay, so in receipt of that, any questions? Everyone's clear? Ms. Rhoademeyer, if you'll come forward, please. And identify yourself for the record. You know that.
Thank you, my name is Kim Rhoademeyer, I have a question. So if people want to speak tonight, are they going to be allowed to speak again on the 27th?
Our preference is to hear everything at the time that we're making a decision and not a broken, you know, with a long delay in between.
So if they wanted to speak tonight, and they have different things they want to cover on the 27th, would they be allowed to do that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Recognizing that hearing things in their entirety is more efficient, but yes, yes. Clarity for everyone? Looking for a motion?
Move to continue, March 27th.
And I'm assuming that's a 6:00 PM meeting, March 27th, 6:00 PM?
Yes.
So we don't have to renotice?
You don't have to renotice because you are continuing in a public hearing.
So hope to see everyone there, March 27th.
We have a motion and a second, and everyone understands that it will be, unless otherwise noticed, it will be at this location, if we learn that we need more space, we'll take that, we'll account for that, on March 27th. We have a motion and a second at 6:00 PM. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone, thank you.
You need to, Marilyn Craig, Deputy City Attorney, okay.
What'd she say? Oh, we have to adjourn. Hey Jenny, we still have to do public comment and adjourn. We couldn't hear.
Could everyone, could everyone please take, we've got to finish our meeting, could...
We still have a bit of our agendas, so if you can take your discussion outside...
If you can take the discussions outside, that would be great.
Continuing with our agenda, item N, public comment. Have none, motion for adjournment, please. Motion and a second for adjournment, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. We are adjourned.